Yeah, we got agenda. All right, welcome everybody to the August 16th work session. We are at nine oh two. Uh, we don't have a quorum, but Commissioner Kitchens, would you be do the honors to start this off right?
Sure thing Chairman, I'll be glad to. If y'all will join us in a prayer this morning, then we'll do the pledge. If you will bow your heads with me. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the love you give us. Thank you for watching over us. Thank you for all the blessings you provide for us. We just ask today as we we come to do the the will of the county. Look over these budgets, look over how we are trusted to spend the taxpayers' money the best way for the highest and best use for this county. Well, we just ask you to guide our minds, guide our hearts, guide all the decisions that we make so that it will honor you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kitchens, well done as always, thank you very much. Mr. Rissner, I think the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate y'all being here today to to uh talk about the coming year's budget and just want to thank Levita and Leslie and really our whole whole staff for for the efforts they've put in to get everything ready for today. And so um just wanted to spend a few minutes first thing this morning talking about our current projects, what our revenue looks like, and then talk a little bit about the the next SPOST and and planning for that. So um I may repeat this later because I know there's just two of you here now, but um we have a lot of projects from that were approved in the for for this year and really for the year prior that we're still scrambling and trying to to get built. And so um I would just ask I would just ask as you as you look through these projects today, just keep in mind that we've got a lot still hanging out there from from past years and we've just found ourselves in a situation where you know, from a staff standpoint, from a consultant standpoint and design professionals and and that kind of thing, everybody everybody just seems to be overloaded with with projects. And I think, you know, there was a lot of government money that that came forth during the COVID years and and trying to scramble to get that money spent and get those projects delivered. So um I excuse me, I have no concerns with with purchases, things that are that are easy to do. But the projects that are really labor intensive in terms of having to manage the project, I just we're a little bit maxed out. You know, we'll certainly do whatever the board directs us to do, but just know that we've got a lot still hanging out there from prior years that we need to to get finished. So um we are in 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 good financial shape. We're going to finish the year with a surplus. A lot of that is due to to LMIG funds. We have, you know, if you look at uh we've got two years plus the supplemental LMIG funding. And so that that makes it appear that the surplus is larger than it actually is. A lot of it's restricted revenue. And so um we'll we'll hopefully have all that out to bid shortly. On the for the revenue for the coming year, the numbers you see we factored in, there's about four hundred and forty thousand in additional tax revenue. We do have some additional sales tax revenue. Sales tax collections have been strong, and so there's some additional revenue from that. So that's all factored in. The uh what else related to that? The the other thing I wanted to talk to you about was SPOST. So as you're looking at as you're looking at these projects that the departments are requesting, and there are some big ones there, know that probably next year is a good time to start planning for that for the next SPOST. And so if you uh the current SPOST expires in like July of twenty seven. And so you could, we could work next summer to put together a new SPOST, put it on the ballot maybe in November of twenty five. And assuming that's approved, then you can go go to the bond market at the beginning of twenty six and get that money and and be able to to do projects then. And so uh some of these larger things that you you're going to hear about today, just keep in mind that that's, you know, that's right around the corner. And so um you know, that that may be an option for for projects that are larger that we can't do, you know, through the through the regular operating budget. Anything else I'm missing, Levita, revenue or project related? But I mentioned earlier Commissioner, I was just telling them we've we've got a lot of projects from prior years that are still hanging out there that we're still working to to get delivered that are in various phases of the of the process. And I don't have any concerns with with y'all adding, you know, purchases, things that can be done kind of quickly and just sort of a single shot deal. But those that are real labor intensive and require a lot of planning and coordination and that kind of thing, we're just still struggling to catch up from from prior years. And so um you know, we'll certainly do whatever the the board directs in terms of projects and that kind of thing, but I would just request that y'all keep that in mind. All right, I think that's about all I have on that.
Who's our first one up?
Uh, Health Department. Jason, real quick, you you said four hundred and forty thousand in additional sales tax?
Four hundred and forty in additional property tax.
Property tax, okay. And we don't have anything on sales tax yet, do we?
The sales tax, let's see. Let's see, sales tax. All right, so if you look in your if you look in your packet, I've got there for you kind of at the beginning just a list of all the various projects that we have to account for that are either approved or in progress or in repayment. Just kind of something for you to hang on to for reference, the special request list. So if you look on page fifteen in the bottom right, page numbers fifteen to fifty nine, second line from the bottom there, local option, sales tax. Then and we get a number from the state that we have to use for mileage rate computation purposes and for budget purposes. And that number is two million eight ninety-two five eighty-four. And and we're on track this year to to collect about two point eight million. And we collected two point eight million in in twenty twenty-three. So the the number for twenty-five may end up being higher on sales tax. I think they probably give us a conservative number just to use in that process, but about two point nine million.
But we're we're not looking at a lot of new revenue there in sales tax?
Not a lot, no.
That that was what I was looking at for new new money?
Yeah.
For new new requests, new money, kind of.
Same part, just not the same side.
Okay.
Ready for the Health Department?
Mm-hmm.
Health Department, y'all want to come forward?
And Chairman, what we've the guidance we've given all the various departments is fifteen minutes, eight minutes for their or seven minutes for their comments and eight minutes for questions thereabouts. And what's that?
You got you got the clocks.
I think Leslie's going to help us keep time over there and and try to keep us on track and going.
Okay, good morning, everyone. I am Sylvia Woodford. I am the District Financial Administrator for the North Central Health District. I am here on behalf of Jones County Board of Health to kind of discuss why we were requesting additional funding this particular year. And then, of course, Jones County is one of our thirteen counties within the North Central Health District, and I'm responsible for the physical management and budget oversight for that particular health department. So we are requesting additional funding in addition to the required amount that comes down from the state per the master agreement to help with to first of all, for support and also to help offset the additional operating costs that we have occurred incurred. As you all know, a couple of years ago, up until, I believe, twenty twenty-two, you all were funding us the required amount, which is a little over fourteen thousand, and some additional funding as well. And we certainly appreciate you for that. And then at that time, we were actually cut the additional amount, and we continued to receive the required amount, which was again a little over fourteen thousand. In twenty twenty-two, we also began renovations of our facility there, which was, you know, it was a need, and it was also intended to expand the services that we offered there as well. We also was able to get a nurse practitioner on site there, which again enabled us to provide additional services there. Of course, when we did that, of course, that increased our costs as well. We had a a very healthy fund balance, as most of you know, as well. And that was just due strictly to the the staff there and and their budgeting and just, you know, really managing the funds that we received. Anything additional, you know, that we had each year rolled over to the fund balance, to our reserve funds. And so because we did the renovation of that facility, it cost us a little over six hundred thousand to do that, which caused our fund balance to in our operating checking account to decrease tremendously. We are required to have at least three to six months of reserve funds on hand. I'm very sad to say we barely have two months now. But again, with the increase in costs, the utilities have nearly doubled. When we compare the utilities, just, you know, the 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 light bill, the Georgia Power bill or whatever the
Tri County.
Tri County, okay. But the utility bills, when we compare this year to, you know, the last couple of years, they've nearly doubled. And so for that reason and purpose of again, we're here to ask for additional funding. When that amount was cut, we were told that, you know, if we ever needed to get that amount back, we could, of course, make a request and come before you to request that. And certainly that is what we're doing now so that we can meet the needs and continue to balance budget and keep the current staff that we have on board now.
We appreciate y'all, and Donald White has been a godsend to us because we've had a lot of problems at the Health Department, as you all know. So um and as she was talking about the light bill, I did a graft for them for the district office from twenty-three to twenty-five. This month, it quadrupled. It's the graft was like this, and then in twenty-four, it just went like this, which Georgia Power said that they did increase their rates. I'm not sure how much they did, but um now, you know, I'm walking around, I'm the light police, cutting all the lights out, trying to keep the air on a certain level. So we are trying. We are doing services. We're not doing the amount that I would like, but we are trying. And um something I wanted to mention, Chris, I spoke to you at the last board meeting. We're all county facilities, and we all should support each other and one another in what services that we provide. And flu season's coming up, and I would love to partner with the county. And however, whatever it looks like for y'all, what you would want us to do to help you, we will do that. So I I look forward to hearing from Jason or whomever I need to speak with to set that up.
Any questions or comment?
My question may be more for Jason Maynard, answers to him. When we done the renovation, did we add additional square footage?
Two thousand.
Two thousand square foot? And I'm assuming with renovations, we did energy management or at least energy efficient equipment?
I I believe all that was incorporated, yeah. I'd have to go back and check to be sure.
I would I would recommend doing an energy audit to see if your utility bill's quadrupled, and we only added two thousand square foot, and we renovated old equipment with new equipment. The energy efficiency difference should have equaled out there, so you shouldn't see four times as much utility bills. Georgia Power rate was like two point seven five or two point seven nine. And they'll do that every three years at least. So it averages about two and a half to three per year. But they can only request that every three years, I think it is, the the mod rate. The other one was, oh, the how did we fund that renovation? She said six hundred thousand out of their account. Was that a matching amount for?
It was, there was a million dollars through the CDBG COVID program. And then they they funded the remainder out of their fund balance. So there was no local funding to to that.
We had the Health Department had a CD that was voted upon to cash to fund the project.
So so not out of like operating general fund, operating annual?
It came out of the CD.
Pretty much, there was some FNE that came out of operating because we could not, of course, we couldn't use the CB CDBG grant for for that. But we did use some for FNE.
Other comment, questions? Any other?
I think that's it. We certainly appreciate this time and hope that you would consider the request of the additional eighty-nine thousand.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Run a little ahead already, right? All right, uh, Mr. George, I think you're up next. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, how's everybody?
Good morning.
All right. I see four enhancements on here. One is an increase in the first one, number fifty-eight, is increasing additional travel, training, and dues funding. As you know, we're mandated by the Department of Revenue to keep up our certifications and have to have forty hours of continuing education every two years. The majority of the staff, probably all the staff this year, their two years is up, so I have to send them to courses, forty hour courses. I do not know at this time where those forty hour courses will be located because they have to take certain courses that they haven't taken so far. And those courses could be anywhere throughout the state. So um my travel and training budget needs to be increased along with dues and fees. Our Wing Gap computer system, we have to go to another level because we have mobile assessor now. And the previous lower level for our dues for our Wing Gap system doesn't cover integrating mobile assessor into the Wing Gap system. So we have to go to another level for our Wing Gap dues. Education and training also. Like I said, I do not know where those courses will be at and how much they will be the Department of Revenue will be charging. So I don't want to fall short of that because everybody has to go. Plus, the Board of Assessors has to go, they have to go. They're mandated to go forty hours every two years also. All right, next, new employee. As you know, the county has grown significantly in the last at least fifteen years. The size of our department has not changed in fifteen years.
Can I ask you a question? So we know, you should already have a spot open because we haven't filled Emory's spot. We filled Andrea, right, but we didn't fill Emory's?
No, Tommy Lee took Emory.
Okay.
And Donna took Andrea's.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so yeah, last fifteen years, you know, the county has grown significantly. We need another employee to handle the growth that has occurred. As you know, it takes two to four years to send someone to training for them to be trained up to do this job efficiently. So I'm asking for a new employee. Next is office furniture. First, we have a retention schedule that we must maintain with the Department of Revenue with certain records. So we're constantly getting file cabinets to retain this information because we're on a schedule, and these records can't be destroyed. So um our area is shrinking in our office. But if you allow us to have a new employee, I need to reconfigure the office to support that new employee. And they will need furniture because furniture doesn't exist right now for that new employee. But the whole office needs new furniture. This furniture is twenty-five plus years old. It's falling apart. I'm holding my desk together with tape. I got handles falling off things. So I need new furniture, one, to incorporate the new employee, but really to replace the old furniture in the office for everyone. All right, and that number is an eighteen thousand, should be seventeen thousand. Okay? The last one is personal property audit service. Okay, personal property audit service. We're requesting to send out an RFP for services of twenty-five thousand dollars to audit the personal property accounts. This is something that's been requested and recommended by the Department of Revenue. This has never been done in the tax assessor's office. So um we have to hire a third party vendor to do it because we don't have the expertise to do those audits. The audits, from what I know, will pay for itself. It will pay for this twenty-five thousand dollar contract to whoever's awarded. But it's something that needs to be done. It's been recommended to be done by the Department of Revenue. So I'm requesting that it be done for this upcoming budget. And that's all I have.
The the personal property audit, how often should it be done?
Maybe every three to five years. Maybe every three to five years.
And for someone to have that local expertise, is there a skill set that comes along with it, some training that they have to go get, some certification?
In most counties that do their own audits, it's a person who that's all they do. And it takes a long time to obtain that skill set to do it.
Any other questions? Anything else, Mr. George?
No, that's all I have. All right, thank you.
Sheriff Department. We're on a roll.
Good morning. First, I wanted to start with personnel. And I know that the I understand that the county is looking at the continue with the perhaps the four percent increase from merit to COLA. What we are looking at to do is expanding on that just a little bit in a recruiting retention manner. And we're going to ask for an additional forty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars. And that includes an additional one percent pay raise to be calculated by two point five in COLA and two point five in merit for forty-nine employees that work midnight shifts and holidays. It's just a differential for them to get an extra little bit of bump in pay for having to work midnight shift and holidays every holiday and all night long while everybody's at the house. So that's one of the things we're asking for. It also includes a uh twenty thousand dollar raise to take a part-time position that we're asking that we currently have and make it a full-time position, and that's going to be the security guard at the courthouse five days a week. We had two part-time employees doing that, and they have both left. And it's just not, we just can't find part-time employees to fill those slots and then make sure we're filled all the time. So we found a retired certified officer who wants to do that five days a week. And so we can spend our rest of our time out here in the front of the government center with those part-time individuals from the jail and so forth. And it also includes a two thousand dollars for taking our starting deputy pay from fifty thousand thirty-five dollars to fifty thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars just to help to help do some recruiting and put that on some brochures, just jack that up just a touch. And as far as personnel matters, and the way that breaks down, now that uh it's actually uh let's see, that's so that's twenty-four thousand dollars is for a differential, and that's for not just the Sheriff's Department, the jail, and dispatch. So it's forty-nine employees and rank and file employees. This is not command level in positions at all. I'm requesting a an increase in overtime for twenty-five hundred bucks. As salaries go up, overtime uh pay rates go up, and we have some other reasons why we require them to do some extra training and so forth. So those state mandate training issues are going to have to going to have to be addressed. And we think that uh an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars just for the sheriff's office employees will work for that. Just so everybody knows, the 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 differential pay that we wanted for each department for thirty-three one hundred was thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one dollars. For the jail, thirty-three two fifty was six thousand four hundred and eleven dollars. And thirty-three three thirty was four thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars. We're asking for a uh actually, it's not an increase, but at some point, all of the flock cameras that we that the that the board has approved is going to be is paid up till next June, but we'll start uh taking responsibility for those for those payments and for those things for a five-year contract. We up from a two-year to a five-year because it saved us five hundred dollars per camera. And we're asking for thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars for, and that includes it actually includes three cameras, but let me just make sure I don't confuse myself while trying to explain. Two of those cameras are going to be what they call a Condor, which is a twenty-four hour, seven day a week video camera and located at the the park in Haddock and Highway forty-nine Recreation Complex. We're also, if the board will recall, when we asked for the flock cameras, we got two what's called flex cameras. They can be moved around to any different locations. And we're going to, we found that we didn't use those as much as we needed, as we as we thought we would. So we're taking and trading them in on one of these cameras, so we're not paying an extra. It's just just moving to a different camera. And we're putting that camera on Graham Road. Initially, I tried to save some money and put one in Bibb County on Initially, I tried to save some money and put one in Bibb County on Gray Highway to cover Graham Road, Gray Highway and the old Clinton until we found that the Nob Hill apartment just absolutely just works us to death with folks going up in there. And it's not in our jurisdiction, so we are just going to move one camera on up further past that so we can concentrate on just the problems coming into Jones County. And so, we're going to move one on Graham Road because that is generally where we have another issue too. So, we're not, although we're getting five cameras, we're only paying for an additional two. We also, that also includes, we're hoping to purchase two more of the condors. And that is included in that price of thirteen-nine to put one at the Liberty Park and the Highway Eighteen Recreation Complex. You know, there've been some issues at the complex. We had a car fire there a couple of months ago. And we are really concerned where children congregate at because we have our share of sexual offenders on our registry. And in conjunction with the flex cameras that we have, we can see what's going to where those congregation places are. And so, that's, that's why we're looking to do that. Now, we haven't done that so far. And we're quite, frankly, we're having an issue with Tri-County, Georgia Power at the Park in Haddock and at the Forty-Nine Complex on Forty-Nine has been no problem. They're serviced by Georgia Power. We can put anything we want on those poles. We just can't do that with Tri-County. And so, there's an issue we're trying to get around. And that price will allow us to put up our own poles and power the cameras twenty-four hours and just see, well, we, try to find out what we don't, learn what we know that we don't know. And so, that's what we're asking for there. We're asking for an increase in vehicle maintenance and repair. Those prices have continued gone up. I think last year alone, we spent over forty thousand dollars just on parts alone. A headlight for these new cars is twelve hundred bucks and there's nothing around, we can get around it, so. And dues and fees, we're, we're asking for a six thousand, thirty-dollar increase. The POAB cost of more employees signing onto the POAB is going to, is, that's the reason for that. Education and training, we've asked for a two thousand dollar increase in that. Simply because we require, some of these officers are required, both state mandates and local mandates with the sheriff, require more training. And twelve thousand dollar increase for investigative services and so forth. We have to purchase a lot of software programs to help investigate crimes. Recently, we just got a face recognition software. And from that, as a matter of fact, there was an issue with some checks with the department with the, and that's how we identified that person. And so, next week, we're finna try some people that robbed a convenience store on Forty-Nine. They identified those people for it. So, if we're, the more video that we're getting, we're actually, this, we run this through this software, and that's not the only cost of the software. We have other software, PenLink and stuff where we can take court-ordered records and metadata and everything and put everything into the software and it just correlates everything so we can make some understanding of it. Now, the K-9 services, we've asked for a seventeen thousand dollar increase in that. That was three thousand dollars and that was based off two dogs. We now have five dogs. We're finna get another dog that's for a Jima grant. And just feeding those dogs and making sure that they see the vet when they have an issue and taking care of those and, and housing those dogs. We initially, the K-9 officers asked for twenty-five, but we cut it back to twenty because I think we can do the feeding. The three thousand dollars that we initially had for that, most of the feed and everything for those dogs was covered by Dr. Gadd anyway. She just furnished that. I can't ask her to do that for five dogs. So, we're just asking to go up on that. And then, operating expenses, that's a seven thousand dollar increase and that's solely for ammunition because we require folks to train more and those costs have gone up. Equipment under five, we've, we're asking for, requesting fifteen thousand dollar increase in that simply because we have to put more equipment in these cars and these equipment has gone up. So, the, what we used to cover in the SPOS funds is just not enough there to cover the cost of the computers and the, all the other communication equipment that we had to outfit these cars now. A lot of that is because the in-car cameras, when you, and it's, there's some other issues that we're going to discuss here in just a minute, but the, the sole source cameras that we use, where they're not selling a camera for an in-car camera and a body camera, they want, they now sell these things in bundles. And so, that price has gone up. So, when we buy a in-car camera, we have to buy a body camera to go along with it. And just the cost of, of maintaining that, that video has gone up and, but it's, it's, the, the, the decrease, the decrease in, in citizen complaints has, I mean, is almost nonexistent. We used to have them all the time and then we just have to take time and investigate those things. Simply now, we can probably fill them out in New Orleans a day after we just look at the in-car camera and the body cam footage. And those things have pretty much taken care of themselves. And uniforms have increased. We used to have a place in Macon. We'd go get them. That case caught on fire and never came back in the business. So, we had to outsource to another gentleman to get the same type of uniforms that we have now. And unfortunately, those have, those, those, those prices have increased. I'm going to come back to the, the capital request of, of all of them here in just a minute, but I just wanted to, oh, I could go ahead and touch on those now. The capital request that we had, one was, the first one was the flock cameras, the new flock cameras we'd like for the two, for the park, Liberty Park on Upper Road and then the Highway Eighteen Complex. I told you wrong a while ago, those, that thirteen-nine does not include those two new cameras. Those will be two brand-new ones. They do include the ones that we just got and are fit to be installed. That, that is eleven thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And that, again, would cover a Liberty Park and Highway Eighteen Complex. And that does include having to put up our own poles and having electricity ran to them. Forty Alco sensors at sixteen thousand dollars, that's for DUI enforcement. Every one of the Alco sensors we've got now is over fifteen years old and we're just afraid that's going to cause an issue in, in some of our, some of our cases.
Yeah, hang on, just a second. I don't know if everybody else is having as much trouble as I am.
I have no idea where he's at.
But the, the things you're naming off, in the first of it, I saw in the general fund summary, but when you're going through that, I'm not seeing them on the... Yeah. And the other thing that's confusing for me is the budget numbers. We don't know the budget number. So, I'm looking for titles. They're not alphabetical. The numbers are not...
Thirty-three, one hundred is the sheriff's office?
Right. But in our packet, thirty-three, one hundred doesn't come right after thirty-three-hundred and it doesn't, S's don't come...
Well, I apologize for that. I'm used to, I'm used to dealing with this lady back here. She knows those numbers.
And, yeah, and she knows those numbers and so I'm just trying to...
We're just trying to find where you're at.
Okay.
So, you're on your...
I'm on, I'm on, I am on the sheriff's office, the, the main, the main sheriff's office budget.
He's on page thirty-two.
What, what page?
Thirty-two.
Thank you, Sam. I thought I was...
All right. Now, y'all saw me over here flipping and flipping.
Thirty-two or fifty-nine.
Yeah, I put capital purchases for each department separately. So, these, the first numbers I went through was just the, was just the existing budget. And the flock cameras and Alco sensors was a capital request.
But I, that's what I couldn't get confused because I don't see flock cameras on our...
You with me now?
We're on page thirty-two.
Half of it.
Okay.
Thirty-two, thirty-two, and then turns over and on page thirty-three.
Yeah, my thirty-two ain't there.
Look, there's three sets of numbers.
The bottom right.
His thirty-two is Highway Eighteen.
Keep thirty-two down here on this corner.
Yeah, there's, there's two sets of numbers. There's two sets of numbers, not the one in the center, the one in the corner.
Why y'all do it like that?
Keep us on our, keep us on our toes.
You want to see if we're listening? I mean, I can explain it all if y'all want to.
No. We're already confused enough.
We're having a hard time keeping up. Explaining just really going to confuse us.
All right, I found it.
All right.
It was on page eighteen in the middle.
But again, our thirty, page thirty-two and thirty-three, I don't see Alco sensors anywhere on it because it's not going to be in this. It's going to be in the...
In whatever line item. Yeah, maybe it's on the capital list.
Right.
It is on this list.
Right. But flock cameras is not on that list for Forty-Nine, Eighteen and...
Yeah, flock was on there. It's already thirty-three, one hundred.
No, it's not on...
It's not like a flock camera. That's what they're confused about.
Yeah, we, we had a line item, we had a line item for just the flock cameras. Now, that thirteen-nine for that includes the, the two cameras we just got. Those were the, where we took the flex cameras and we traded them up for the, the video camera. Now, those, those dumping cameras that the board wanted, we still have those and still put those out wherever y'all find a complaint at. So, those still go out. We just traded ours in because we didn't find we needed them. Those video cameras is what helps us more than anything.
You, you mentioned, just real quickly, the dump cameras. The complaint comes from his office or...
Well, it comes from anyone of y'all that you had to complain about some illegal dumping. That was the issue that y'all had that we addressed with two extra flex cameras.
I just didn't know how we dispensed it. Okay, so...
Yeah. We had two...
You made the motion to get them.
Yeah, I remember that part, but I'm just talking about how we just sent...
Yeah, what's the process now? If, where does the complaint come and how do we know where they go?
Yeah.
Well, I, I sent an email to everyone, or taxmen, say, if y'all get a complaint, if we get a complaint, we go put the cameras out. If y'all get a complaint, you just call me and we go put the cameras out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had them there somewhere.
Yeah.
There's a blue Corvette, I mean, no. Going to the highway speed, no.
Okay, so, back, back to the, always, back to the capital purchase or request on...
Yeah.
Okay. If, if, in that windows, those are, that's the big semi-tank thing that we have that we utilize and just in case we need it with, it's bulletproof transportation if we have something that, in a certain location that we need to get something in there and get rescue some people out or we need to show up at a place where we feel like we may take on some gunfire, that's what we use. And it's, problem is, is that every glass window on that thing is bulletproof and over time, the sun will cause it to delaminate. And when it delaminates, you can't see through it. And so, it's just not safe to drive when you can't see through the windshield. So, there's only one company in the United States that replace those. They come out of Texas and just, not the wheels, the windows in the back because we can do without those. But the windshield and the two driver's doors is eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to replace and includes labor and parts.
How many times have you used that vehicle?
Oh, we use it quite, quite a bit for our cert callouts.
All right, so is there a storage, you know, that you can put it in to protect the...
We have it under a shed out back. So, we, it's, it's out of the, it's out of the sunlight, but it's, I mean, it did, it did, it did see some time in, in desert storms, so it's plenty of sun there, so...
That's, that's that big.
Right. We have put a shed over everything else. It's been there since we had it. And, of course, we, it's, it's, it's kind of great because we maintain the tires, the, we were able to acquire a brand-new set of tires for it, actually, two brand-new sets of tires for it. And so, we keep those treated so they don't dry rot. So, if we ever had to replace a tire, that's, those things are probably two thousand dollars apiece.
And plus.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, and then, we put it, we requested two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for LifeVax. These are the anti-choking device, rescue devices. We will put them in our patrol cars and earn our jails in case of a choking hazard or somebody has choking. We, we're probably closer to most of these scenes than, than anybody else. And so, we just thought that would be a good idea to have that little apparatus. It comes with two-face masks, one for adult, one for child. And so, we've requested that.
It's the suction thing, right?
Yes. In our jail, we don't have anything such as that in the jail. And if there was, of course, everybody's familiar with the, the, yeah, the CPR and all that good stuff, but we just, it's, we just thought it was a good idea to have that. And then, a capital purchase of eight thousand dollars for K-9 training. Are, we have, we went from six dogs. Now, two of our dogs are tracking dogs, two of our dogs are drug dogs. And two of our dogs will be, and we don't mention the word, the B-word out in public because we're just not willing to have a bunch of bomb threats at the schools and so forth. But these are for bombs, firearms and gunpowder. So, that's what they work on. What we decided to do with all of our K-9 officers was have them cross-train in several different subjects. So, we never have any downtime. When this guy's on vacation, we have, somebody can come up and get the tracking dog and we can go do what we need to do. Or get the drug dog and go do what we need to do. But that is some, that is a class over in South Carolina that they're scheduled to go to next month that will certify four of our handlers. And that's all we have right now to, to work with those tracking dogs. And that's the only, that's all I have for the main. Now, if you mind, I'm gonna skip over and I'll work pages on the, the jail, which is my thirty-three, two fifty, but I'm not sure where it's at in y'all's books.
Page thirty-three.
There it is, right there.
Thirty-three on the right.
Thirty-three on the right. Always look at the right, not the...
Not the wrong one.
Don't look at Jason's, Mom.
If you look at the wrong one, you'll be lost.
No, I mean, they're all mine.
They're all Jason's.
We have, in, in, in the, of course, we have asked, we have asked for, in that, in that, in that budget, seven thousand dollars in more overtime costs. That's what we pay these young men and women to sit out here for that Thursday and Friday when Jimmy's not here and when we have some downtime at the courthouse from some of the other employees. So, that's generally where that comes from. Now, I also mentioned that, I'm not sure how many of the forty-nine employees that are in the jail that have to work midnight shift and holidays for that, that extra one percent differential pay that we've asked for, but I'm not going to go back over those numbers again. Tipping fee, which is kind of, I'm not sure how this is, and I think Jay, maybe Jason can explain it better than I did. We were on the waste management where they came around and picked up our dumpsters and everything else. And for the longest time, the sheriff's department never paid that, can't pay for that. And we kind of kept that secret because it'd come out of our budget, but it got paid by the county. But since one of our personnel, one of our people said something about, we had a problem with waste management not coming and picking up the trash. So, we switched over to rolling and joined the county contract there. And that, it runs out to be right around nine thousand dollars a year. The extra thousand dollars is for our grease trap, our grease trap removal and all that stuff. So, that's, that's the, the reason for that increase request. We are asking, and I want to, in both these next two, in building, equipment repairs and maintenance and building maintenance, there's some, we've asked for in equipment repairs and maintenance, twenty thousand... there's some, uh, uh, we've asked for in equipment repairs and maintenance, twenty thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars. Now, uh, last year, that was, uh, it was thirty thousand dollars. And we had to take, uh, because we had a moor go down, we had to replace our moors to keep the grass cut, we had to replace those moors, and that was twenty thousand dollars, so we took ten thousand from equipment repairs and maintenance, uh, and took ten thousand from building maintenance and there was a new line item and machinery equipment which was twenty thousand eight hundred ninety dollars is what we used to replace those moors with. We just would like to put that money back to where it was at and in the next line item of building maintenance, uh, we requested, uh, ten thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars to put that back to, uh, the forty thousand dollar level it was at. Because everything, keeping that, keeping that building maintained and the training building and all the other buildings, we had some problems this year, uh, I think the county may experience the same thing we had with lightning strikes and so forth, uh, we had to replace some, uh, or repair a bunch of our servers, uh, so we would like to put that back to where it was at, um, and, in building maintenance, and I'll explain it in just a little while while we're asking for it. Also, we're requesting a contingency of thirty-six thousand dollars, just in case. This year, we had a boiler go out, that was eighteen thousand dollars that we didn't, wasn't expecting. Uh, we had a leak in the tower house up there in the roof, which caused it to have, the roof had to be redone. We do most of that stuff with inmate labor, so it didn't cost us a whole lot, but we do have to buy the supplies for that. And so, it's just, and in a moment, I will explain to you why we're asking for that contingency, just in case. Uh, dues and fees, we requested five thousand dollars for the increase in POA dues enrollment and, uh, we're asking for eight thousand dollars for uniform and inmate clothing. That used to be taken out of operating expenses, but those have gone up as long as everything else we take out of operating expenses to keep the jail moving. And it's just easier for us to see what we're spending on inmate uniforms and, uh, clothing, uh, if we have a, just a separate line item for that. The machinery and equipment line item will actually go away because we would like to put that back into equipment repairs and maintenance and building maintenance. Now, um, I don't know where the capital purchases for the jail are at in your books, but we are requesting, uh, a couple of years ago, we had to replace the washing machines, there's two of them, uh, our dryers, or I think one dryer is twelve and one dryer is fifteen years old and it's, uh, it's, uh, they're just, they're just, it's time to replace them before we have to replace them in the middle of the budget where we not have anything allotted for it. So we are asking for eighteen thousand two hundred, that's for two commercial dryers and these things run every day, we average about a hundred and twenty inmates, so we're washing clothes, a hundred and twenty inmates every other day. And so that, uh, is the reason for the request. In the back of the sheriff's office, where the, Rallin put the new dumpsters, we're having to put them in another location because of, uh, all the tractor trailers that bring the food in and everything else, there's a concrete pad about the size of this room that is pretty much destroyed, it's just broken up and everything else and then there's another area just beside of it, that's maybe uh, twenty, twenty square feet that, uh, we have conduit running for wires to going from the main jail out to the tower house. And we found that, uh, the, uh, when special waste management was doing it, was running over that and after a rain, that heavy truck was getting down and it was gonna pop that conduit line, and we're just afraid if it does that, I don't know what the cost is gonna run those lines back up to the tower house. The tower house is where all of radio equipment that stays out there that sends our radio, or, or, or a radio signal out, that's where that goes, so we had to replace the roof on that and I really don't wanna have to replace those, those, those communication lines for that one conduit. So we're wanting to close and case that, that, that area in, in concrete, so that was a cost of fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that's the cost of a contractor doing it. Uh, I do believe though that, because we've already done the eight-one-one thing where we can get the county to come up and just pop out the old concrete, we can cut that cost down and doing most of that, uh, work ourselves. And if we've also, as we recall from last year, we're trying to upgrade the kitchen equipment. Last year, we've got a double oven and a tilt skillet and that's greatly helped the efficiency of the kitchen and this year, we're requesting a twenty gallon tilt kettle, uh, for seventeen thousand nine hundred and two dollars. And so we're just trying to upgrade these things, ever, it's been there ever since we had the jail was open. And that's all the, uh, capital requests for the jail. Uh, the next one is the, uh, E nine-one-one, I'm not sure where that's at in your books, but I'll let you catch up. Miss, uh.
This, this the next line, right?
Thirty five.
All right.
Right here, okay.
Yeah, it's, those are their capital requests, but in the budget itself. Okay, all right, so in the budget, uh, we have, we currently have twenty thousand, I mean, twenty-five thousand in overtime and we're requesting that to go up to thirty-five thousand overtime. Uh, last year, the, uh, the state required dispatchers to get ten hours of training, which is new to them and we also have to undergo some tele-CPR training and we're seek, trying to seek that out, try to get the best that there is because by the end of, uh, this year, every one of our dispatcher has to have that. So, the increase in, in, in the training is necessary for the, also the increase in overtime and quite frankly, uh, and we appreciate it, the certification, uh, pay raises that the county instilled has driven those salaries up and when those salaries go up, so does overtime cost. And dispatchers are not treated the same as our jail staff and our deputies because of one hundred and seventy-one rule and I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, but law enforcement officers have to work a hundred and seventy-one hours per pay period or per month, twenty-eight day pay period, for anything over that is overtime. But dispatchers are on a different, they're on the same as everybody else, which is forty hour week, so they're just treated differently. Uh, we've requested, uh, uh, five thousand dollars additional in computer maintenance, uh, because of the, uh, simply it's just, uh, and I wish there was an other way of going around it, but computer, desktop computers and stuff pretty much lasts about three years and that's about it, and after that, they start slowing down and there's nothing that anybody can seem to do about it, and so we have to replace just those desktop computers to keep our CAD systems up and running. Dues and fees, we've asked for fifty-two hundred there, uh, POAB costs again because the state has allowed them to come to, to, uh, to, uh, to participate in that. And education and training, I'd mentioned that we have, uh, uh, we have to seek out some of these, uh, training classes, we have to seek out for dispatchers now. We're looking at some, uh, at a school in Indiana do, do our tele-CPR and so that's the, uh, that's the reason for the increase in education and training. Now, as far as the capital purchases for the E nine-one-one, we have uh, gotten with Mr. Coleman, EMA and the fire departments. If you remember, I think, uh, a couple of months ago, there was a gentleman here to do the new Georgia power tower up in Round Oak. Well, Georgia Power said, hey, uh, Georgia Forest says, we have our repeater on that Georgia Forest tower and they said in the spring that, hey, we finna take this one down, but we finna go back up with one, so, uh, if y'all wanna put it back on that one, we're sure would be glad to, because they was gonna go up a little bit taller. Well, lo and behold, we found out they're not gonna put another tower there, they're just gonna take that one down. So we were stuck between a rock and a hard place of trying to hurry up and find something, we have a repeater there that's got to be replaced. All of the repeaters around the county need to be replaced, they're over twelve years old and all of my radios are unserviceable now, they'll still work for us now, but to continue moving forward, we need to replace those. We have to replace that one. I was able to get Georgia Forest Commission to hold off until September first until we could get into the, at least a new budget for that. Uh, because they were finna come down with that tower and then we just had no, we had no other, we had, there was a, we had a price for sixteen thousand dollars to put a temporary tower up and then Georgia Power came along and saved the day and said, hey, you can put it up on our tower, but we're gonna take that one down and put up a tall one. And they're gonna allow us to put it up on the old one and then put it back on the new one when it goes up even at a higher level, which is gonna increase our capacity to communicate better. So, we have to do that, so as far as the capital improvements, it's called a backhaul, we've requested sixty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and, and, and five cent. Now, I am, uh, I've been assured by our radio personnel that's gonna put this stuff up, it's easier to get the towers and the cranes out here one time than it is to get it out here twice. So, when they do that one in September, they wanna go ahead and do all of them and we have to pay one money for the, for the, for the, for the labor and the fee for the, the cranes and everything to get these things, these folks up there and replace these, these have to be replaced anyway at some point, it's just probably gonna be cheaper to do it all now and increase our capacity both with, uh, the public service communication is, everything relies off of that. If those repeaters go down, we can't communicate in certain areas. So we're, we, 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 we're working with EMA and fire department, so of the sixty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and five cent, thirty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-five dollars and three cent would come from the sheriff's office budget, twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars and one cent would be from the fire department and twelve thousand two, two hundred and sixty-five dollars and one cent would come from the EMA. So we spread it out, where the sheriff's department handled sixty percent of the cost and forty percent would come from both the fire department and EMA. So we can spread it out amongst all of them, it just, it just looks, it's the same money, but it just, it's, everybody's got some skin in the game.
Is that the total of the sixty-one pieces?
It is, yes ma'am.
That will, by the, uh, for permission, that will, by the, um, in offer of communications tally.
Yeah, the, all those repeaters and radios that we have around the county on the fire towers and water towers and everywhere else, they need to be replaced, they're over twelve years old and they're just not serviceable no more. Uh, if one goes out, we're gonna have to replace it with a new one uh, and that's just gonna cost more money to do every one of them separately. While everybody is down here, the towers are down here, the, uh, the, the cranes are down here, the radio personnel are down here, uh, it would just be, uh, I, I think it would be, it would be cheaper in the long run to do it all at one time and be done with. As far as the rest of, uh, we have no other requests for any other departments, uh, for, uh, uh, so that's pretty much the same, so. Now, I, I did tell you that, uh, we had asked for a contingency and the reason we'd asked for a contingency in jail maintenance is because, and I'm, I'm trying to get through and get to the best I can, uh, our roof on the sheriff's office, uh, has been there since we built it. Other than the new expansion where it has brand new roof, uh, has some issues and the roof needs to be replaced. Uh, we had, I think, uh, it was Edifice Consulting come out, uh, they went up and done that and they gave us a working budget, a working price of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to re-roof the sheriff's office. What we're proposing is that may go into a sploshed type of purchase where we can actually make do for a year or two years until that becomes available, so we're not hitting the county with that one. All right, now, also, our awning in the very front of the sheriff's office is, it's showing some age, it's done rusted out in some places and we're gonna have to replace it. I'm not concerned about the leaking part, I'm worried about the structural part because we're, it attaches to everything. Uh, is, it's, it's not got that, so I was gonna include that, I don't have any prices on what it's gonna cost that, even though I have, uh, we put a, uh, CID, uh, extension on the side of the building. Mr. Harold Delotes, an architect and maker, helped design that, gave us some ideas on what to do, we did most of that work ourselves and he is looking at this thing, so once he gets through structurally, he can see what we need to do. But we're gonna try to simplify the, the awning and have it come off with some red tin metal, uh, like the rest of the building is, to try to be a little bit, save a little bit of money, but yet update, look at the building just a little bit. And I don't know what, uh, issues we're gonna have with the roof before that comes about, I understand there's some treatments and some, uh, coatings that we can put on the existing roofs just to get us through that in case we have, I just don't know what the cost is gonna be to have to have somebody come out fifteen, uh, three or four times to go up there and fix that stuff, so we're, that's, uh, that's, that's where we're at with that, that's why I'm asking for the contingency, so I can look at some of those coatings and try to get us over that next couple of years before we have to see some bad, some, some real significant problems. Uh, other than that, we don't have any other requests.
Any questions?
Um, one would be, look at it, with contingencies like that, would that be the same contingency as we have for construction, so it would just be a, so we could pull it out of contingency for the county, didn't, we don't, would, do we?
It's not a jail, it comes out of one hundred, one five, one hundred one five nine fifty, just like it did last year, because I think they had the same thirty-six on there, we had it for last year, did you guys approve for last year? It was the same thirty-six thousand, so it wasn't new, so, it just rolled over with the permission of the.
Yeah, I just, I don't like having Rob Peter to pay Paul, we have some significant happen that we have to take from somewhere else to do that, so I'm looking at some coatings that we can put on there for pennies on the dollar to try to get us over that hump until that roof can be re- replaced.
How old is that roof?
Sir?
How old is that roof?
It's, uh, since, it's been there since, uh, ninety-eight when we first moved into the building.
Right. Certainly.
The new, the new part is, is relatively new, uh, but the, the rest of the roof, is it TP, uh, TPC or that?
TPO.
TPO, that's it.
Can you thank y'all? Earl, we appreciate it.
Thank y'all so much.
Y'all ready for a break, or you wanna keep going? Break, all right, a few minute break for arresting, we'll start with, uh. Break. Alright, a few-minute break for arresting. We'll start with, uh... Close enough.
You're good.
You gotta go? Alright, we're ready when y'all are. We're ready, we're starting.
So, the three items that I'm asking for additionally this year, um, additional landscape funding and one of our line items to, uh, start clearing some railways, um, particularly the sewer railways in River North. We've started over the last week in Hampton Lakes, clearing some of our, um, that are sewer easements and whatnot. River North's probably forty years since the last time it's been cut. Hampton Lakes is about twenty years right now. So, that's gonna, we'll see how far we can go get this year with the, with the additional twenty thousand. I'm thinking we can get up to pretty good, top of it. But currently, we can't even get access to half our sewer system in River North because of sewer problem. We'll get a vehicle back there, but we can't even get side-by-side back there or something, so we gotta start getting some of this cleared out so we can start to back it up. Um, here recently, we've got a sewer camera, so now we're able to inspect routinely the sewer system. Plan on doing that at least, at least once a year. So, to be able to get the camera back there to the, to be able to start the inspections, we're not, we're gonna need to get some of these railways cleared. Um, additional concrete and asphalt, um... This may not be surprising to y'all, but been a lot of patchwork in the county over the last, before, before my time, that it's all kinda catching up to me, you know? Hey, I, I have customers saying, you know, "This was supposed to be patched, or my driveway was supposed to be repaired five years ago, it never has." I get those phone calls all the time. There's quite a bit out there that I feel that we need to make right, because it was a hundred percent the water department that tore up some of these roads, so... I'd like to have this additional funding to get some of this stuff, um, repaired. And my big, my, my big ask this year is a complete meter change out of all of our forty-seven hundred water meters in the county. Uh, Jason and I have spoken about this several, several different times, and we feel the, the best way to do this is maybe going to get a G balloon, about a one percent, um, interest rate over ten years. The two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars would be a ten-year payoff plan, so we would incorporate that two-hundred-and-eighty-five into my general, into my, into my budget every year for the next ten years to do a meter swap out. That's at about, I think, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, some two-and-a-half million dollars worth of cost to, to buy new meters. And a contractor to come in and replace. A contractor to come in and change the meters out. I'm sure y'all have heard me complain about our current water meter situation. They're not, they were the cheapest, but I believe it was a little bit better. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but they were put in in two thousand and sixteen. They're just not reliable at all. Currently, we have about a fourteen percent failure rate on them, as we, as we sit today, I checked this morning. So, that's rereading about six hundred meters every month that we have to send pretty much two guys full-time to go out and manually read these meters, and that's not what they're supposed to be. These new meters that we're looking at getting, um, they're either cellular meters, or they're on repeaters, similar to what the Sheriff's, uh, saying you have antenna repeaters around the county. So, at any given time, I can pull up a customer's reading their meter numbers within the last fifteen minutes. Every fifteen minutes, it sends the information to us, so if somebody, you know, it would, it would improve our customer service. If somebody were to call us, you know, you can see what the water usage was, so within the last fifteen minutes. Currently, we have no way of doing any of that.
Question, so that would eliminate the, the old-school way of riding around with the reader in the truck? It would eliminate that service or that requirement of labor?
One hundred percent. You will still need, you will still need a meter technician, because even if you have ninety-nine point nine percent of them that are reading every single month, and there's no system out there. That's one, you're gonna get one hundred percent of the readings. All forty-seven hundred are gonna read back to you, you might get. Like I said, ninety-nine percent, ninety-eight percent, so you're still gonna have to have somebody that has to go and check on one or two percent, you know, make sure that they're reading, you know, and troubleshoot, troubleshoot all that, but it's not gonna be, like I said, the, the ten to fifteen percent that are constantly every single month.
Alright, thank you.
So, the old meters were, I don't know, seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, some number like that. And now, this current system is three times that amount.
What's the life of that new system? Anticipate, what's the anticipated life of the new system?
Anticipated life, they sell them all water meters as a twenty-year meter. They, they come with a ten-year full warranty, every, every meter line that there is, it's a hundred percent, ten, uh, zero to ten years, it's one hundred percent replaced, at no cost to the county. And then after ten years, it goes appropriated. So, everyone that... I have done a lot of research on meters over the last six to nine months. I've spoken to, uh, a lot of people, and they, everybody that I have talked to said, "We need to go ahead and plan on between ten and fifteen years, really counting on a meter to last." They'll sell them as a twenty-year, some of them will go to twenty years, but as a budgetary thing, to, to count them between ten and fifteen years.
And we are near the ten-year mark.
We're at nine years, I think, are our oldest that we have in the ground.
Right, but, and I remember, like, we staggered some of them going in. It took almost two years to get them in the ground. So, from the last ones that went in the ground, um, we're talking about pulling them up.
And we're still paying on the old ones, aren't we?
Yeah. Yeah, we, we paid.
We paid for those with cash.
Oh, we have to, okay, alright. And, I'm just saying, in our time, we've been installing them, but they're not hooking up.
And they were, uh, so did those, the ones that are in the ground now have the ten-year warranty on them?
Right, yes, and they, we have.
And they have sent us, uh, sorry, I don't mean to jump it, but, uh, they have sent us meters to replace them, but I mean, you're just replacing junk with, you know, newer junk.
And, and if I remember correctly, we were going from old mechanical meters to a wireless meter to get away from the meter readers, the person going out and actually doing the meters. But it was first generation, and we were sold as, "These are the greatest things since sliced bread." And as soon as we started getting them in, within a couple of years, we're like, alright, these are not as, these are not great, great. They're good meters, but they're... And then we started going, well, maybe they're not even good meters. And I, I remember when we had, um, some of the representatives from, was it Mueller?
Mueller.
Yeah, there was a big blow-up about that. They had people leaving the company, all kind of stuff, because it was not, the product was not what they sold it to be.
There's, uh, there's several class actions, all six against Mueller.
Yeah, I knew there was a lot of them.
Mueller is not a water meter company. Mueller is a brass company.
Yeah.
They make great hydrants, curbs, anything brass, metal, just, Mueller's a great brand, my guy. One of the best fire hydrants you can classify is a Mueller. But they were, from my understanding, they were essentially selling all the brass stuff for everything in the water industry except for meters. So, they bought a Hershey meter, which was... So they bought a Hershey meter, which was a reliable meter, and then they put their electronics and all that stuff on, and we were the first to buy it. And every, every representative will tell you that the ones that we bought are absolutely trash.
So in that class action suit, is there any way we can get any money back?
Second question is, maybe a levita question, since we're looking at probably, we don't wanna stretch it out over two years like we did last time. I, I don't know what the lost revenue is from bad meters, or changeout times to, from old meters to new meters. But if we, if we bond it, if we, can we borrow the money, bond the money, and then let it sit in account and draw interest off of it as we're paying out for meters? And possibly have a little better deal than...
So, trying to have a surplus?
No, I know we won't have a surplus, but it might be, instead of a two million dollar project, it might be a one point six or one point seven.
I think Jason checked with...
Right, we, what we kinda talked about, the three of us, was, you know, if you, if you just kind of view this as an ongoing operational cost of running a water system. Meter's got a ten, ten-year life, GFO will give you a ten-year loan for, for a meter upgrade. And just looking back at some of the recent loan approvals, sub-one percent. And so, I don't know for sure that we could get that rate. For the numbers here, we, we went with like a two-point-eight rate, or two-point-five, I think, is what I plugged in. But there's a very good chance that we would get a lower rate than that. And so, you spread the payments over ten years, that's the useful life of your meter, and, and you just know in ten years, you're gonna have to go through the same exercise again. And you just build that into, to your, to your rates.
So with the GFO loan, it's not a repayment loan, they'll give you the money upfront to go ahead and get your...
That's right.
So there's no need to bond any money.
Yes.
And at the end of ten years, it may be where, you know, we're still, we still have great results, and they just spread this out for another few years. The one, the meters that I'm looking at are proven meters, they're not just a random meter company. They're great, very reliable, spoken highly of. Again, I've done, I've spoken to dozens and dozens of people in this industry, and asked everybody what, you know, what they would recommend, and that's pretty much the forward. I'm attempting to demo here in the next few weeks, and try to see which one of the best ones fits.
Do we have any idea of, and I go back to the lost revenue part of it, if, once we go from what we have now to a new meter? What kind of increase in efficiency or increase in water are we gonna see that might offset some of the cost? I mean, if we're, if we're two-hundred thousand a year, and we're gonna save seventy-five thousand, that's a, that's a good perk.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have a real good feel for that, but there would definitely be some.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, there's no doubt.
It would be a lot, it would be a lot.
And, and Brandon knows this, out of four meters that I pay for, one of them has been a nightmare. I mean, it, it's just, I mean, I think we've replaced it a couple of times in three years, and it's just, they, they stop working.
I think, okay.
I was gonna say, I know that on one, I feel like I lost money, and on one, I feel like the county lost money. So I'm sitting here in a bad position going, alright, now we evened out, you lost money and I lost money. But, at the end of the day, somebody's losing money. The customers are either mad because they feel like they overpaid for something they didn't get, or we spent money pulling water out of the ground and treating it and servicing it and sending it to somebody and didn't get paid for it. So...
We're, we're, we're constantly, earlier this week, we found a meter that hasn't given us the right information in two years. It, it sends us a read, so it doesn't alarm us that, there's no, you have different, different lists that you can go off of these meters. High consumption list, which we go and check, if anybody uses, is over twenty-five thousand gallons, it spits out a list, so we go check all those, you know? It's, it's abnormal usage, so we go back and manually look at the meters. There's a few, there's a few of them, but we just found one, like I said, this week, that it's been over two years that it hasn't read us the correct numbers. It, something in the, in the meter, it's been undercharging the customer for two years now. They've been getting the bare minimum water bill for over two years, and I think we're lost about a hundred thousand gallons on just that one meter that we found this week.
Can you say this round four? What percentage of meters do you think are in that category of lost revenue category?
I have no way of knowing, in, in all honesty.
But you got a fourteen percent failure rate, that's currently.
Right, alright, I remember that.
The other ones already getting it there.
Again, that's a full-time meter reader, that's, goes out, does the drive-by, you know, gets eighty-five percent of the meters. And he and another maintenance guy will send them out to go do the six, seven-hundred re-reads every month. So, I have one of my maintenance guys that we have to pull off maintenance, fixing leaks and whatnot, for about two to three weeks a month, and we alternate that position. That's between three different guys, they, they kinda alternate. So, essentially, I have one and a half employees that do nothing but meter reading. With this new system, I would have, I wouldn't even have a full employee doing it. I mean, I'd have pretty much a part-time. I'd have an employee, but part-time, if his work is gonna be checking on meters and whatnot, then he can be trained to, to work on other things. Because you're not gonna have this, all these re-reads.
Any other questions? Anything more for the water department?
Yes, sir, that is, that is it this year, pretty, pretty simple.
Alright, thank y'all, very much.
Thank y'all.
We're putting them old meters on, keep public, see if somebody needs them. Spare, spare meters. You're gonna need them.
We shouldn't have talked about them so bad, as opposed to meeting them, if we're gonna try to...
Spare meters, you're gonna need them.
You ready for me? I'm in the right order, ain't I?
You're next.
Alright.
You wanna hit the button?
I have a timer. Alright, I, mine are gonna go in a little bit different order than maybe what's on the sheet, I'm kinda...
That's not allowed.
We are already confused from earlier.
Oh, gosh.
We have reached our capacity.
I'm kinda grouping them together, the, the similar ones, and what they address. So I'm gonna start out talking about our two major requests for major projects. That would be the addition of potentially one or more splash pads at various locations. That, that would be a good addition to the community. We don't have any kind of access right now for our youth particularly to, you know, get wet in the summertime, and they're gaining popularity around most of your parks and recreation departments in the region, and just throughout the country right now. Splash pads are just kind of a, a big thing that, that people are adding. The cost on those can vary. I, I put two-hundred thousand dollars down, I think a hundred and ten thousand can probably get you like, your foot in the door with the splash pad. That probably doesn't get you any benches around it, or a sidewalk going up to it. But that'll, that'll get your foot in the door for the, for the splash pads. As far as your costs that go along with the splash pads, everybody who I've talked to, which I've talked to at least probably eight or nine different reg departments, everybody recommends pass-through or freshwater, not the recycling, because they come with too many problems. And, you know, anybody that said they had a recycling one, they said they wish they wouldn't went that route. So that was the one consistent thing that I got from everybody. As far as the cost goes, it really is gonna depend on how big you make it, how many gallons per minute. What I've found is, it's, it's probably gonna end up being somewhere between forty gallons a minute and a hundred gallons a minute, according to how many features you get. You know, they got a computer that you can slow things down, or rotate from station to station. So, I think on a monthly cost, we're probably looking somewhere probably between four, and four thousand dollars a month and eight thousand dollars a month on the, you know, the, the water and sewage. Brandon says he thinks that we would have to, you know, the, the, when it passes through, it has to go to sewer, it just can't go to, you know, storm drain or whatnot. So, that's pretty much it for the, for the splash pad. The next thing is the pickleball courts. As many of you know, pickleball's booming in Jones County right now. The courts are packed, you know, weekends, nights, mornings, throughout the day. We've already pretty much outgrown the six courts that we have, and, you know, we wanna, you know, ride the wave, and, you know, you hate to see people every, every night when you're at the pickleball courts. If you're there during prime time, you see people show up and, you know, either go home or have to wait a considerable amount of time. So, you know, getting some more courts would meet a need of a lot of community members. You know, we, that's, like, pickleball does not discriminate based on gender, age, anything like that. So it really touches a lot of members of the community. The price I have for pickleball, there again, the, you know, three-hundred's a good benchmark, you could go way bigger than that, you know? Like, if you wanted to put a pavilion next to your pickleball courts, or, you know, if you wanted to go a little bit bigger than eight, or if you wanted to put some kind of shade features, the more benches you have, you know, the, the greater fencing you have can, can definitely affect that price. But three-hundred'll get our foot in the door pretty good. Next, I'm gonna go over some like, equipment and maintenance needs. First, I wanna talk about tractor and attachments. Currently, we don't have a tractor that runs at all, and we really need one, because we'll be able to use it in all of our parks. Our new areas like Jakes Woods, the, the mountain bike trail, eighteen forty-nine, you name it, Liberty Park, we got a lot of work that we can do. And right now, we're even, we're either have to borrow a tractor, or rent a tractor. So, and, and also, we have really a good staff that can operate a tractor very well and do pretty much everything we need. Right now, we're fertilizing fields with a, basically a backyard spreader that we've got rigged up, that we're dragging behind a utility cart, you know? So we wanna be, get to where we have the tools that we need to do the job. The turf is a high priority for, for us right now, and for any of you that's been out there recently, you'll see a lot of improvement, especially on the football fields. All of our class took a turf management course, or all of our staff took a turf management course over the past year, and they've really learned a lot. And they're applying that knowledge into practice, and you can see some good results on the fields. Now we just need the equipment to do what we need to do. The next thing is an aerator for the golf course. Right now, we're outsourcing aerification, because we don't have an airifier that is, that is working, or that can be working. And the place that we're outsourcing, every year, they say, oh, this is the last year we're doing it. So at any time, and there's not a lot of people in business that do the kind of thing that he does. And so, we could be without that at, at any given time. And plus, the job that he does, really, it's, it's not great, it's just all bits available right now. The, the airifier that we would get would be a lot better than the one that he's using, and would make the greens, which is a priority at Lake Genesco. I mean, when you're at a municipal course, you don't expect every inch of the facility to be like Augusta National, but what keeps people coming back is the condition of the greens, and getting a piece of equipment like this will help us ensure that our greens are always in good condition, you know? Sometimes when we airify now, the way that we do it is, you know, the greens are, they're pretty rough for about a month afterwards. This new airifier would be like about a week afterwards, they look really good. So you, the holes are a lot smaller, you can go deeper, and have a good effect on the grass. Next thing I'm not gonna talk long about is a turf tank. Jason and I demoed one of these a couple of months back. And what a turf tank is, is it's basically a robot, it's like a Roomba for painting fields, honestly. And it programs on GPS all of your fields, and all you do is put paint in the thing, and it'll paint one field, it does soccer fields, it does, you know, football fields, baseball fields. You don't have to lay the batter's box down, you just paint the box. Jason saw it, does perfect in line, goes to the foul pole. And what that does is, it'll actually save us on a lot of paint, and it'll save us, you know, on manpower, you know? All we gotta do is fill it up, and then instead of us like, you know, painting the field, we can be dragging the next field, or working a mound, or emptying trash, and then they get a notification on their phone that'll just say, oh, add paint. They go over there, fill it up with paint, which it paints for probably about thirty or forty-five minutes. And once it's done with the field, it just goes right to the next field on its own. And we're able to bring this from location to location, so we load it up in a trailer and bring it out to forty-nine, do all the forty-nine fields in the morning, put it back in the trailer, go do all the eighteen fields in the afternoon. And, you know, if we wanted to, you know, paint some fields between games and our tournaments that we have, it has those kind of capabilities too. So, it's just a feature that would save us on some paint and time, as far as, you know, just freeing up our staff to do some other things. Next is laser grade and dirt for the infield. You know, I'm sure that every time it rains, you know, people, you know, act like, you know, it's a great flood, and, you know, you miss a day or two sometimes because of our drainage situation at the fields. And by laser grading the fields and adding more dirt to them, it would make, A, it would be more visually appealing, and the surface would play better for the players. But B, we would have less downtime whenever it rains, you know? Like, when, when you have your fields graded just right, if you get a big storm at eleven o'clock in the morning, you know, you're definitely gonna be able to play that night. Sometimes you can get a big storm at four o'clock and be good to go. But now, some of our fields are worse than others, and, you know, you get a big rain in the morning, you're done for the day, no matter what. So, this would kinda free us up for, you know, for one, it would, it would make the facility look better, and two, it would make it to where we had less rainouts and make a lot of the baseball and softball community happy. Cart paths at Lake Genesco, I know that's a big price tag beside it, and, you know, obvious, we need a lot of new cart paths on a lot of holes out there. What I'm hoping is that we can just find a way to chip away at it, instead, you know, instead of one year saying, oh, we need one point five million dollars for, for cart paths renovations at Genesco. It'd be nice if we had an amount, you know, if this got approved, you know, next year, I'd probably ask for two more, and the next year or two after that, just, just to kinda chip away at those cart paths. Some holes, these two holes that I'm requesting right now, they don't have any cart paths at all on them. So, you know, that, obviously, it, it can hurt you as far as, you know, your ability to grow grass, because people are driving every which way, and especially when it's wet. So, and, you know, having cart paths that are nice and usable, it just enhances the overall experience at the golf course. So, hopefully, that's something that, if not, even if not now, in the future, you know, we can kinda, you know, upgrade that area of our course. Because like, you know, some areas of our course, it's like you're riding through a hunting camp, really, I mean, that's what it's like. You're on a little dirt path that's looked like it made for a four-wheeler. So, last is kind of a new programming area that Commissioner Martin and myself talked about. He's wanting to, and I think it'd be a good idea to have some senior programming out at Matty Wells, on that side of the county, to where those residents could have access to different activities. So what that would look like, if you combine the two together, would be like, you'd have a senior programmer, and what they would do is plan activities for the seniors, you know, such as, you know, Mondays at Matty Wells Gym, you might have yoga. Tuesdays, you might have bingo. Wednesdays, you might have pickleball. It might be two activities a day, that's what the senior programmer would do. And then that a hundred thousand dollar operating budget, that would also potentially include a vehicle. One of the things that's very popular among senior groups is field trips, you know? Sometimes they just go to like, you know, shops at River Crossing, you know, they're gonna go on a shopping trip. Another day, they might go a movie, so this would provide them transportation to that. And if that was approved, that budget line would be something that would be, you know, evaluated every single year, that, you know, when you're starting a new program. Obviously, there's some upfront costs that you might not have every single year, just getting supplies that you need, and, and that sort of thing. But I do believe that it would go well in Matty Wells Gym, because you could set some tables up, and that gym doesn't get used at the morning time at all during the school year, and that's the main time that senior citizens meet. So, it's a good way to just get some more usage out of that facility in the mornings. You have the senior citizens, the afternoon, you get the youth coming there, and it could just be good for that side of the county. So, and that's all I got.
Any questions?
Heck, yeah.
Oh, boy, here we go.
I do it.
Start back from, from the last to the first, like, because I noted, putting notes on some of the first. Cart paths, cart paths, you talking asphalt or just graded dirt that's there?
This would be, this would be cement.
Okay.
So, concrete.
Well, I was just wondering, because as, as little as I played golf, I have been on golf courses and under sea with the cart paths. Some of them are, some of them are dirt with like gravel on them, and then some of them are, are...
And that's an option, and we have some places that are, that are like that right now, and, you know? Some of our holes where we had asphalt, you know, it's so beat up right now, it just needs to, you need to start a lot.
And I have seen, so those asphalt millings do work if you get them, and, and then pack them down. So I was thinking with a new tractor.
Yeah.
You can grade a little bit yourself, and then just have some asphalt milling hauled in, pack them down.
Cheap.
Yeah, that might be the way to go, that would be an upgrade from what we have, you know, right now. Because right now, you know, we have a lot of older golfers, and they get beat the hell out there. That's what they're complaining, they're not complaining because of what it looks like, they're complaining because their back hurts after riding the course, you know?
And I've, and I've mentioned, I got four or five calls from people, especially the last four months, when we've had those six rains that were three inches at a time. I mean, my hunting club road just washed a pipe completely out because of it, but they've sent pictures of it, it does, it's just like trenches across there where you can't hardly get over with a golf cart, which is not a good look. So, yeah, that's good. Question that I know from some of the pickleball... Question that I know from some of the pickleballs, I'm probably gonna get a, a bashing for it, but I gotta ask. I know most of our recreation processes, we try to provide to the public at no cost.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know we charge some of the travel ball teams to rent the fields and do that kind of stuff. But I'm assuming we don't charge any for pickleball, or if we had a splash pad, we're assuming that it's no, no revenue side of that.
The only thing that we would charge for a splash pad and for pickleball is if a random organization comes in and wants to do like a fundraiser for pickleball, we charge them a fee to rent the pickleball courts if they're trying to raise money for their kid's softball team or whatever. And splash pads are very popular for birthday parties. So we wouldn't actually be charging for the splash pad, but usually, ideally, we'd have a, a pavilion next to it and you would pay for the pavilion. Now, the splash pad would still be open to the public, but that money would get them the usage of a pavilion.
And that's probably, that's where I was going a little bit with the, with, with the pickleball courts. And I agree that I, I hadn't seen anything blow up like that has, and I will be the first to say that as, as little as a proponent as I was to begin with, we are reaching the three-year-olds to the eighty-three-year-olds with that. There's, and, and school kids, young kids, older adults, seniors and all that. I just want us to be careful that we don't, because I know every court's around us charge memberships or either fees to play. I don't want us to have, or be careful about having teams or, or, um, or, um, memberships or groups that come in and say, okay, well, our, our, our teams are gonna play, you know, for Tuesday nights and Thursday nights, and then we're now having the public not be able to get on the court. So I've heard some complaints about that. Part of that is we don't have enough courts for being as popular as it is. But also, we have to be careful that if every, if it's open to the public, but, um, teams and organizations are, are using it more than the public's getting to use it.
Well, that would be my plan for the new courts is what we'd probably do is we'd keep one of the, uh, either the old or new would be for, um, free play and the other would be for league play. So there would always be courts available for free play.
I, I think that's a good problem to have. The splash pads, we don't know, you, you know how I feel about splash pads. I put in seven or eight of them. Um, you said six thousand gallons per hour is what I, I.
Uh, well, I mean.
A hundred a minute.
Forty to a hundred a minute.
Uh, so if I go to on the top end, a hundred, I'm using round numbers, that's six thousand a hour.
Yeah.
How many hours a day would we expect?
Uh, I would say, I factored in like five, but I called Baldwin, who has a similar sized splash pad that we have. They said they use thirty gallon, thirty thousand gallons a month. So, um, and, and, you know, we, we called about.
But they're not, are they recycling or?
Uh, no, no, they're not recycling. They're freshwater.
Thirty thousand a month. That's, that's five hours a month.
That's what, that's what they, that's when I called the water department. I asked them four or five times yesterday. Thirty thousand a month is what they said.
Barnsville, I mean, there's, there, is there's a freshwater also?
Um, yes. But I, I couldn't ever get ahold of that.
Well, and theirs is pretty new too, so.
So in the last couple of years, everybody's going away from the recirculation. Now, you're gonna save a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars not putting pumps in.
Mm-hmm.
But you're also, for every gallon you put out, you paying for that gallon to go down into a sewer. And we're having, on the backside, whether it's us having sewer or we're paying to the city to, to manage the sewer, that's, that sewage has to be recycled and repurposed and re- redone. So, um, there's, there's a process for that. So there's a cost on the water and the sewer side. And it, it, it just, it's hard for me, I, I was taught, shut the door, you can't cool the hole outside.
Mm-hmm.
Don't waste water and just let it pour down the drain. And for me, to run water just to go down the drain is, is about as inefficient as you can get, except the inefficiency of recycling and chemicals and testing and all that, cost-wise. So I just want to make sure that, that we're looking at, uh, they're popular, they're great, and I, I will say that I think we need one. I just, we really gotta look at the expense of them because if that's something we're looking at doing, we gotta find some sponsorships or some money or some revenue side to, to offset it. Because, um, they are a maintenance nightmare and, and just a nightmare.
Yeah.
Out of six that I put in, at one point, only one of them was running, uh, in, in a year's time. And that was due to park failures, um, and, and the biggest thing is, is operations. I mean, kids love to play in them. They love to stick things in them. They love to, you know, put a stick in them, put rocks in, you know, in the, in the little outlets. And so, uh, people play with them because they want to run around and play in it and stuff. But it, it's, uh, it's a nightmare. So, but I don't want to downgrade the benefit of having one in the county. I just want us to be realistic on what it's gonna cost to operate it after we, after we put it in.
I mean, I'd say the pickleball courts honestly would get more usage for what we cost to put into it. I mean, if you talk about, you know, bang for your buck, you know, but, you know, you definitely have a lot of smiling faces at those, uh, splash pads as well. So, you know, if only money grew on trees.
Well, I think the one thing about the splash pad too is the fact that every time we as Jones County go visit these other counties, we're spending revenue going there and we're gonna take those kids to get a Happy Meal at their local restaurants.
Ice cream.
And ice cream. And so all that revenue that I've just spent in another county, I could do it right here in Jones County by taking them to the Newcom Crazy or the Dairy Queen or McDonald's. So that revenue was gone from our tax digest.
But, but a little bit of pushback on that, when they, we're, I don't know of many people that are saying, load the car up with the kids and let's go to Forsyth and play in the play, and the splash pad. They're going to places that have activities or destination location that has a splash pad. So, um, uh, they're just, I mean, I could, I know, I run the numbers, I run the walk counts and everything else in making big, uh, when we were doing splash pads, I, I know the numbers. And they're local kids, they're community kids, and that, and I think that's what we should, probably should focus on is our kids staying here and playing. What are the numbers of three to eight-year-olds that are gonna play in a splash pad in Jones County? Because we're not gonna attract people from other counties to come play in our splash pad. Because being honest, it's probably gonna be at one of our recreation parks, the only place that we've got either forty-nine or eighteen now. You gotta think about things like, if we're playing football, or we're playing baseball, or we're playing soccer, and all those kids are up there playing football, and then you got people in the slack, splash pad, do we have enough parking for both sports and both entertainments at the same time? Um, if we're talking about doing it somewhere here, that's totally different. But then, I think you minimize the number of people that would come because they're only coming here if they've got kids that want to play in the splash pad.
Well, the thing I want to add about the splash pads too is they generally do better when, when they're near other features. Like most of your successful splash pads do best if you have like, you know, a, a playground. There, there's a lot of like regular playgrounds like connected to a splash pad where they can go back and forth. But I could see if you put one at eighteen doing well because while you got your big brothers at football practice or baseball, you take little brother or little sister over there and play on a splash pad, or after practice, you get in a splash pad. I mean, I could see it getting a lot of use there too. But, you know, you wouldn't want to put it somewhere where it's like the standalone thing. It needs to be near some other attractions.
Would be great if you can just sit there and pop it, use it for irrigation and.
Yeah, that would be good. That would be good. Yeah, recycle that water because we're spending about five thousand a month on irrigation out at eighteen right now.
Real quick, tractor, I'd love to see a lease.
Yeah.
With, with maintenance.
Yeah, we would be very interested in that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess you still got Gary out there?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, he, he grades the tractor, but I mean, it's still the lease.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we would definitely, if, uh, you know, I would love to be approved for one way or the other. I mean, if I could pick my number one ask of everything on the list, it would be a tractor right now because, you know, I'm wanting to do some things out there that, you know, we can't do without a tractor. But one way or the other, whether it's through lease or purchase, we really need one.
And you don't have one at all right now.
No, we have one, but it doesn't work. And we took it to AgPro and they said, uh, we can't fix it.
Isn't that the one we bought from Motry in, in auction six years ago, seven years ago? And it was like four hundred bucks back then.
I'll echo what Chairman said. Lease is gonna be the way to go with some of these electronics. And, yeah, I know it's gonna be under what requires diff and that sort of thing. But there's so many electronics, and if you looked at some of this new stuff, I mean, it's, it's.
Yep.
But the senior program, I, I was, go ahead.
No, I was just saying this lease purchase, lease is gonna be the way to handle that. That way, X years old, turn it back in, get something else.
Yeah, that'd be, that would be the way to go.
With the senior program, um, you know, I sit on the Middle Georgia Community Actions, and one of the things that they do is our senior center here in Jones County and our transit. So, um, that might be something that, to look at with combining with them to have another outsource of another facility for that side of the county. So, and that's revenue that comes in through, um, the agency there. So that might be another connection to talk to, and that rate may come down a lot because it might be something that Middle Georgia Community Actions can actually help provide these and work together.
That's a good point. Good point.
Trying to rush, but trying to rush, how's that? Anything else?
Anybody got anything else?
We were so far ahead earlier now.
I know. And I, we already heard, we already heard the buzzard early. She needs to go.
Sheriff's Department. I said the Sheriff's Department.
We skipping public work?
How many, he got five minutes?
How y'all doing today? I'm asking for one extra minute.
He's got seven, she, she got you seven minutes.
All right, I'm gonna start off with, uh, draw your attention to item number thirty-three, which is a motor grader. Uh, unit four hundred, which is a, uh, twenty-one-year-old unit. It's reached the end of its life cycle. It's producing whining noises at the rear end. After just a few hours of operation, uh, we feel like investing in a new machine will minimize downtime and enhance efficiency. Cost of the new machine includes a comprehensive maintenance agreement. The, uh, purchase price for this machine is three hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and zero cents. But we do have lease pricing for, uh, sixty-month lease, uh, which is four thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars a month. Item number thirty-one is a wheel loader. Uh, a new wheel loader is needed for managing materials at the Public Works yard. Our current loader is a ninety-four model with ten thousand four hundred and twenty-one hours. Uh, it's undergone frequent repairs recently, and, uh, the downtime's affected our ability to load and unload materials such as gravel, sand and asphalt. Uh, furthermore, the new loader, uh, lacks the efficiency, lacks the required hydraulics to operate the asphalt zipper efficiently. We want to use that, uh, feel like we can make good use of that on our dirt roads. The purchase price for that unit is two hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. The lease price for that is, uh, the payment is three thousand nine hundred and four dollars and sixty-seven cents on a sixty-month lease, which also includes a maintenance agreement. Item number thirty-two is a, a excavator. Our current CAT three-twenty excavator is nearly twenty years old. Uh, has worn out undercarriage, and we've been limping along with it, but it's gonna require over thirty thousand in repairs. Uh, parts availability has become a problem, and, uh, we feel like upgrading to a newer model. We're not gonna resolve these issues, but the new, the newer machines offer a thirty percent improvement in fuel efficiency. Uh, that includes a maintenance agreement as well. Purchase price for that unit is two hundred and sixty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty cents with a lease payment for sixty months of four thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars and forty cents. Uh, they're supposed to be getting me some updated lease numbers, uh, possibly lower, uh, lower payments as well on government lease agreement. Item number thirty is a dump truck. Our unit number three-twenty is a two thousand and five international. Truck's currently out of service and requires repairs estimated to exceed fifteen thousand. Andy's also telling me that it's not gonna be long before it's gonna need an engine rebuild, which is gonna, gonna be pushing twenty thousand. So, given the truck's age and nearly twenty years and the high mileage, staff recommends replacing it with a new dump truck. Don't have any lease numbers on this. Thought maybe we could get some through ACCG. But the purchase price for this, uh, on, on source well is two hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and zero cents. Item number twenty-nine under Capital Projects is a parking lot paving and resurfacing at Public Works. Uh, the front parking areas and main entrance to Public Works yard require resurfacing, and the current condition of the entrances at the main gates concerning, it's just falling apart. It's cracking, showing signs of deterioration. Addressing these issues will improve safety and enhance functionality and improve the overall integrity of the Public Works facility. The total cost on that, which includes striping of the parking spots, is sixty-one thousand three hundred dollars and zero cents. Item number twenty-eight, uh, we, we may be exploring, uh, doing this as a, as an emergency, under an emergency order because we have, uh, private property being affected, but it's Round Oak Juliet Road culvert repair uh, and slope stabilization. When this box culvert was originally constructed, there was no concrete apron installed. Uh, as a result, significant scouring has occurred on the downstream side, leading to deterioration of both wing walls, which is separated from the culvert. Uh, additionally, slope erosion has affected the property behind the right of way and requires stabilization to prevent further damage. Addressing these issues will help restore the structural integrity of the culvert and prevent additional erosion. The estimated engineering and construction cost for this is two hundred and thirty-three thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and zero cents. There, there may be another option of just tearing that culvert out and going with a precast culvert that, that may be more cost-effective. But, uh, we, we've yet to receive any, uh, estimates on that. Uh, down, moving down to sanitation now, item number thirty-seven, uh, a grapple truck. We have a two thousand and eight Peterbilt roll-off truck. Uh, we feel like investing in a new grapple truck in place of that truck will, will help us maintain efficiency and, and, uh, and be reliable waste, for our waste management services. The initial investment is two hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. And it'll be offset by retiring the Peterbilt roll-off truck, which has consistently faced engine and fuel delivery issues. Uh, this replacement will result in long-term savings and operational benefits, making it a wise, necessary expenditure for our, for our department. That, that price again is two hundred and ninety-four thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents. Uh, don't have any lease prices, lease, uh, prices on that yet. Uh, maybe we can get, get some, uh, lease numbers through ACCG on that. Moving right along, item number thirty-four, uh, compactors. I think all of you know, you've probably seen the condition of our compactors. Uh, we operate nine convenience centers that depend on compactors for household garbage. Currently, we have thirteen in use, many of which are structurally failing. The cost of ongoing repairs is increasingly surpassing the cost of new units. Most of these compactors have deteriorating floors and walls, which pose safety hazards to the public and employees. Uh, failing sidewalls and leaks at the bottom expose users to hazardous liquid waste. We feel like replacing these units with new thirty-yard self-contained roll-off compactors will improve safety and efficiency. The cost of these units is two hundred and eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and zero cents. We did not include, this was an oversight on my part, we didn't include the electrical proposal from, uh, Middle Georgia Electric. Uh, they all require, the, the new units require new hydraulic units and new electrical because the old units are obsolete. Uh, the cost for that electrical work is seventy-three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Y'all remember last year, we talked about using forty-yard, the larger containers to, uh, use as like a small transfer station. We didn't know how well that was gonna work until we took our one forty-yard roll-off container and started using it this year. And we've been saving a lot of trips to the landfill, cutting down on a lot of minimum load fees at the landfill. And overall, it's just saving trips, uh, fuel efficiency, and, uh, getting a lot more done with less trips to the landfill. So we were asking for four of these large containers to be able to set up a, a transfer station there at Public Works. And Oberlin, which is our busiest convenience center by far, will benefit from it the most, so it's right there. Cost of these four units are thirty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and zero cents.
That's for one or for four of them?
For four of them. Item number forty is the thirty-yard roll-off containers. Y'all remember, we got fifteen of these last year. You know, the cost of repairing the containers that we have are, exceeds the price of new units. So to address this issue, we're requesting fifteen more this year. The price went up a couple hundred dollars each, sixty-five hundred dollars each. The total for those fifteen will be a hundred and one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and zero cents. Uh, moving on to Capital Projects, item number thirty-five is office building at Rock Creek. Uh, requesting to replace the office building at Rock Creek Convenience Center. Uh, it's over fifteen years old, has leaking roof and soft floors. And the cost of repairing the current building surpasses the expense of constructing a new one. The cost, uh, the total cost of this, which came from, uh, building maintenance, is seven thousand one hundred and four dollars and thirty-six cents. Item number thirty-nine is, uh, convenience center fence upgrades and repair. Item number thirty-nine is, uh, convenience center fence upgrades and repairs. Uh, the, the current fence, which is over twenty-five years old and originally residential grade, is in a dilapidated state. The poles and rails and fencing are deteriorating, posing safety hazards to both customers and employees. Additionally, the poor condition of the fence negatively in fact, impacts the appearance of the center. We feel like replacing the fence will enhance safety and improve the overall aesthetic of the facility. This is, uh, a cost of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars and zero We have, uh, at all our centers, we have mostly, mostly Leyland cypress planted at the front of them for kind of a, a shield from the public. A lot of these trees, they, they've reached the end of their life cycle, and they're falling apart, looking bad, so we wanna try to remove them. One idea that, that, uh, our sanitation supervisor had was, was to install privacy fence. Now, the price we have is for metal privacy fence, but we feel like we could get a, a lot better price on vinyl privacy fence. It's a lot easier to repair if it's, if it's ran into or anything, metal's just gonna cost a lot more to repair and maintain. Uh, but this privacy fencing will be fifty-seven thousand fifty-five dollars and zero cents. Item number thirty-six is concrete roll-off pad repairs. This is at the Highway eighteen east convenience center. Uh, the pads are made of thin brittle concrete and, and can't safely support the current roll-off containers. We're requesting the move and replacement of six concrete pads to ensure safety and accommodate the current equipment properly. The cost for that concrete work is twenty thousand four hundred dollars and zero cents. Uh, item number forty-two is additional engineering services in the amount of twenty-five thousand. This is for materials testing and mixed design for gravel and dirt road maintenance, and also for asset management program for bridges and culverts. Item forty-three is additional bridge expense funding in the amount of twenty-three thousand, and this is for bridge joint and deck repair and maintenance. There's a lot of, a lot of our bridges that look like, this hadn't been done in quite a while, uh, this is just playing catch-up. Uh, item forty-four is additional culvert funding of twelve thousand five hundred. We overran our culvert budget this year, uh, partly due to the increase in new driveways. And, uh, as y'all know, this, you know, we pay for the, the driveways, but the customers coming in paying for these and whatever, that just goes back into the general fund, so, uh, we, we have replaced a lot of cross drains on dirt roads this past year as well, so asking for that additional twelve thousand five hundred in funding. And, that's all. How'd I do? It'll make eight minutes.
Oh, we're about forty-five minutes into it now.
I got, I got two things. First, uh, driveway funding.
Yes.
I can't put a driveway in, it's cheapest the county does.
Right.
We're too cheap. That's a lot of our problem, literally. When I got, I had a driveway put in, and when they told me how much it was, I couldn't, I said, I can't even buy the rock. So, I mean, we've gotta seriously look at our.
What it's costing us.
You know, we're not trying to make money on it, but we don't need to lose money.
We gotta cover our cost.
But that's been the same cost since we took over, once since we required doing it in.
Yes.
County, because we used to just get the permit and, and then inspect what they put in, and we had so much of a nightmare, this was before us.
Yeah, yeah, we wanna put it in, but, you know, it's, people laughing, I can't put a driveway in for that. You know, I can make money by charging the, I mean, so, yeah, we need to look at that. Sanitation to grapple. All right, thoughts on that? You could take the sanitation, get grapple. Do away with the fifteen roll-offs and add more, put a forty-yard at every convenience center, and require that only a forty-yard leave out of there. Would, wouldn't that, we, I mean, I look at the tickets.
Yeah.
When we get bills on them. We got a lot of light loads going there that, I'm like, dang, that doesn't help.
Yeah. Probably that chairman is, we gotta think about our customers, and these forty-yard roll-off containers are about, I think they're about twenty-two inches taller.
I'm talking about using, I'm sorry, I mean, yeah, I'm, I'm just, that would be a, it might be off-site or, you can't use that, but.
Well, the, yeah, the plan is, is what, what we envisioned was that our busiest centers putting a forty-yard in between two thirty-yards. Letting the customers, they can throw into the forty-yards if they want to, but we're gonna pull that grapple in between the thirty-yard and, and load over into the forty-yard, clean those thirties out, and then we just move out to forties.
Right.
Uh, less trips to the landfill, less fuel, less, we've been having flat tires, sometimes we have three a week on one truck.
Sure.
Because of the landfill.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, if you, if you made each one of your, just thoughts, you, you made each one of your convenience centers also, uh, a, a transfer station, that these grapple trucks, as they work, they haul fifty yards, right?
Yes.
Am I right?
Yes.
So they take and load that forty-yard and, and just, if I'm out of line, let me know. If, if one grapple truck went to Juliet, right now.
And clean it out.
Just one trip.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, that, that's not a problem, but the ones that you, you would have, if that, if there was two loads, you know, he could take and fill that forty-yard, and then pick up the remainder in his and go to the road. And we just saved a trip with a roll-off that, uh, and we ended up with a full load rather than two trips, we're, we're cutting it down. You ain't gonna save, but probably a third, but it will, I'm just, you know, we've talked about it in the past as far as these, and I just, uh.
Yeah.
Trying to, yes, another grapple would work, but utilizing it to where we're getting the full efficiency by having that, by utilizing our roll-offs with, you know.
Working together.
Working together, that we're not running back and forth with, uh, you know, light loads, it's, you know.
Well, it's not cheap to, uh, Jason will tell you, it's not cheap to, to hire out a, a grapple truck. Uh, when our grapple truck goes down, we have nothing, uh, and it's the most efficient piece of equipment we've got in sanitation.
It's good to have a spare in the backup.
Yeah, right now, we have three roll-offs, and one of them's down. We, we've put, uh, probably over twenty grand in it this year in repairs, and now it's down again, and it's, it just, I told them to park it out there in the lineup, uh, until, until we can get some, you know, until we can get some decisions made on what we're gonna do as far as, uh, increasing our efficiency with different equipment, then we're just gonna have to leave it parked.
Yep.
But we will, uh, we would be operating, if we get a new grapple truck, we will be operating two grapples. We already have an operator for it, ready to go, uh, and two roll-offs.
Yep, but lease.
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 Well, I don't have lease pricing, but we will definitely check into it.
Because again, where, this technology's scaring me. I mean, I won't even buy it, and, uh, that would offset, I'm just thinking if, if more larger containers would be, we could, but utilize the two roll-offs we got running.
Yes, sir.
That's just me.
I got a question. On your motor grader, I know we did a lease purchase or whatnot on a new CAT motor grader last year, how many motor graders do we have in operation?
We have, okay, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, I thought we had surplus two last year, but I thought I'd seen still the Comatse around running roads.
Well, we, we didn't surplus, it's, it's out there on the, it's out there on the surplus line. Uh, we, we have three, uh, if we purchased this one, that'll be three newer motor graders that are, that are five years older left. The twelve M we got with the joystick controls, it's less than five years old. We got a new one last year.
So this will be number seven in motor grader line that's still in the fleet?
That's still in the fleet, yes, sir.
Seven, okay, that's what I was thinking.
Um.
How many operators do we have for motor graders?
Four. We have two in the north, two in the south.
Okay.
Actually, we have, we have five, but one is the superintendent, and I've got him doing superintendent things, so.
Sure.
But he does, but he does, uh, fill in when he's needed. We just had one motor grader operator to, uh, he was a temporary employee, and he moved away, so we're training another one to take his place in the north division.
So with the seven of them, you got four drivers to three are backup motor graders, or they're not running, or?
No, we're, we're gonna surplus two of them. We got, we still got the old John Deere. We've been getting pricing, uh, from John Deere on what they would give us for that motor grader on a trade-in on a lease. It's not adding up to be able to do that, so it's probably best just to just go on and auction it off.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's taken a lot of time to be able to get that price, and they had to come out there and.
Yeah, it's twenty-five-year-old motor grader.
Yeah, it is. And the one we're wanting to replace now is twenty-one years old, so it's been a good one.
Twelve H's, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I only have one question, but I got a comment first, but, um, that was talking about the Roundup Juliet might be a emergency situation. I don't think it's a might, I think it is, um, because we're already in a situation where it's affecting property owners on the side, uh, that, that's gonna be a nightmare. We, uh, it's not gonna get any better, I mean, I've looked at it, it's.
It's bad.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, you know, let's do it, or we're gonna be, union, well, we still got the same thing, we got permits, so how long that gonna take? So, uh, you know, we could.
So where is this at?
Going out Juliet right before you get to the bridge, um.
Fallen Creek?
No, it's, um, back this side of.
JH Aldridge.
Yes, right, right before you get between JH Aldridge and.
Clayton Woods.
Old River Road.
Closest to Clayton Woods, there.
But it's, uh, it, it's got pasture land on either side, or got fence for cows on either side, and it's.
And the fence, the fence used to be ten foot up on the bank, and now it's four foot into the creek. That's how much we lost.
The problem is, I mean, the barrels, it's in decent shape from what we can tell. It wasn't designed and constructed properly. Uh, you have an apron that's poured at, that is below the barrel level at the end of a box culvert, and these wing walls sit on top of that apron, and that keeps those wing walls from washing out and falling down. Well, what, just, that's exactly what's happened. Apron wasn't there, it scoured at the end of the barrel, both wing walls are falling down, one's completely separated, and the other one is just a void in between.
I think if you go around the county, you're gonna see that at every one of them.
Mm-hmm. I'm afraid of that, and that's why we've got that extra money in there for a bridge and culvert, uh, asset management.
But unlike the other ones, we don't have to replace the bridge, we can do work, I mean, permitting, yes, but it's not gonna be as, I don't think it's gonna be as long as the other one, but, uh, that's a big cost, but it's, it's gonna cost us more if we don't do something now.
Yeah, we, we wait, we're going, you know.
Right.
Yep.
I think expedite in the process, I mean, that, that would expedite the process, uh, to go ahead and do it now.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, the only, I'm sorry, the only other question I had was, um, let's look at maybe an option, I noticed we're painting some of our, uh, uh, containers purple, which looks really cool, unless I know we're in Jones County.
Yep.
But they gave me the idea of, of sponsorships on the side of a, of container. I mean, it, it doesn't have to be an annual sponsorship, you sponsor it until the paint runs out, you know, we gotta redo it, but it's, uh, I mean, how many people see those containers when they pull up at a, at the sanitation?
Buy a container, it'd be endless.
That's right. I mean, for, what are we paying for those containers? Third.
Sixty-five hundred each.
Sixty-five hundred, I was gonna say third, but sixty-five hundred. For a sixty-five hundred dollar sponsorship.
For.
It'll last, what, ten years?
Twenty years?
Yeah. Ten, twenty years?
Yeah.
It's not bad.
Good idea.
Entrepreneur thinking.
Cheap, cheap thinking. Saw a guy riding around Lake Huron County the other day with a bunch of signs strapped to a utility trailer, I mean, he's, he's living the dream, making money, advertisement.
Anything else? If not?
I thought Wendy had.
Wendy hasn't?
No, no.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who, who's got next? EMA.
Good morning.
Sheriff, probably.
What's that?
That's the vibe right now, yeah.
It ain't me.
We've got, uh, fourteen items, line items that showed increase this year, nine of which are under EMA, five of which are under the fire department. Um, thirteen of them are all increased due to the increase in staffing this year. The one outstanding item is, uh, under fire, which is a, uh, floor repair at, uh, Station Six up at, um, Upper River Road, uh, which is also a polling, uh, voting precinct. The floor in that station is in bad shape and needs to be, uh, replaced. Other than that, we have eight items that were, um, special requests, some of which the board already knows about. Uh, first one, um, is the EMA, um, staffing, or for three, um, fire stations twenty-four The second one is for the EMA director's, um, new position.
Where we at?
Well, he, no, it's not on this, it, it, it's not on this list here.
Okay.
This one here is not, I know what he's asking here, is that, uh, right now, I am interim EMA director until somebody decides what we gonna do with me, or whether we gonna hire somebody else. It doesn't, I mean, but, um, that's the position, but it's not on this list of special request.
Funding for those things is already built in, since that stuff we're already doing.
Right.
Okay. So we've already got, we've already doing that?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're working on that one.
All right.
And, uh.
The next item was, um, a secure door access request, um, nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. Um, currently, uh, access to all the, uh, fire stations in the EMA, uh, headquarters, um, is a punch code, code system that all current and, um, retired or members that have left still have access. Um, the, um, the new system would, every individual would have a, their own code system, uh, code number, and, um, it would be digital time stamped, so we would know when and who went into the, uh, buildings. Also, he wants to use that system as a time card system for the current, uh, new positions. Um, that way, we know when they enter the building and, and come on duty, and when they leave, um, and get off duty.
That's gonna do all the roll-up doors, too?
No, sir, it'll do the man door, uh, to gets, gets them in, um, and then they've got remotes and wall buttons to open the doors.
I didn't know you were talking about changing it, but I think it used to be the, it's kind of a universal number on the.
It is on the doors, the bay doors have all got keypads on.
Right.
The doors going into all the fire stations are keyed with a key, and that's what he's talking about. When people leave, they ta, they don't turn their key back in to the fire station.
Right.
So then they've still got access to it.
Okay.
And go into this system here, it would be, everybody would have their own code to get into it, but then once they leave, you can delete their code.
Right.
And they, and reassign another one to another person.
They, you know, they still going in to the door and hit that and open it up that way?
Right.
They still got access that way?
Yes.
The next item, um, the board's already, already knows about is, um, the antenna on the, uh, fire tower on Highway eleven, uh, needs to be removed and, um, re-put up on Pippin Road. That was twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars and one cent for the fire department. The same item is the next one under the EMA, uh, budget. The next item was the, um, service or repair for the, uh, fire training building out on Gray Highway. Um, this building is fifteen years old, and since we've had it, uh, it's been serviced and maintained by the volunteers. Um, it's in need of some repair and, uh, calibration now. The, um, Fire Blast, the company we bought it from, is, uh, requesting that we do a yearly maintenance with them, uh, to where they'll come in, service, calibrate, and repair any items. That cost is fourteen thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. Uh, we hope that with this, uh, service agreement and proper maintenance, uh, we can extend the life of that unit. Um, it's fifteen years old now, so it's approaching the end of its life cycle. We hope to extend it another five to ten years with that service agreement.
Curious, that price, is parts and labor, or just?
Uh, I believe it's just, um, um, labor for the normal servicing.
Right.
If anything is broken, or, uh, valves or something of that nature, it would be cost plus.
Okay.
All right. Next item is a, um, heat and air unit at Station Ten. Um, it's been. Next item is a heat and air unit at Station Ten. It's been being repaired. The contractor has suggested that that unit is beyond repair and needs to be replaced. Wanting a two and a half ton system to replace that unit at the cost of three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Chairman.
Yes.
Me and Jason discussed that unit, and it is currently, it's already gonna have a deal to replace it.
In the works.
Even better.
Even better done.
Next item is four vehicles. First vehicle is a Ford Explorer for the E M A director to perform their duties, go to meetings and what have you. The next vehicle is a full-size pickup, extended cab, four-wheel drive, with a light, emergency light package, bed cover, and brush guard. This unit will serve multiple purposes for the fire E M A, answering calls throughout the county on a daily basis. And it will also increase our I S O credits. The new fire inspector will also use that unit for fire inspections and pre-plans for all of our commercial structures. The second unit will be used for logistics, for lawn maintenance, building supplies, vehicle maintenance, as well as responding to emergency calls throughout the county. It will be used to haul the new A T V unit that we purchased. The current vehicle, which was an F two fifty service truck, that truck is out of service currently due to an engine failure, so it would replace that unit. The third unit would be used for the assistant fire chief to run daily duties. It will also respond to emergency calls throughout the county. And it can be used as a backup for hauling the A T V or the boat for river calls. Thomas is asking, our current three pickups that we use for rescue units now are due, they're three-year lease up this year. He's asking that we consider purchasing those three vehicles in the place of the three pickup trucks. The cost savings to purchase those three off lease, they've already got light sirens, they're completely set up. The painting, striping, lettering, and all that's already done, so it would reduce the cost of purchasing those three vehicles. If we went that route, we would only need to purchase the one Ford Explorer. That's all the special requests that we have.
So the trucks, mileage-wise, are.
The three current rescue units.
Least, least purchased.
Yes, they're all still in good, good condition, mileage, servicing's been taken care of on them. They're all, all three of them are still in good service.
And as a matter of fact, the rescue three that we have at Juliet, it's got the least amount of miles on it, but yeah, it's a two thousand twelve, thirteen, somewhere around in there. But it's in excellent condition, and as far as I know right now, it, it don't even really need to go anywhere. I mean, you know, we could keep it, and it would, it's real good.
Okay, I got a question. The old rescue six that served its life, you know, I think it was a G B I truck for many years, and it was a rescue six truck for many years, and now it sits in Haddock. It's a ninety-five Ford.
Yes.
Parts are obsolete on it. I've talked to the mechanic that's done some work on it. I think it has a aftermarket auto parts store gas gauge in it, and only one tank works. So if you run it low, and I know it sat, it ran, responding to calls, it ran out of fuel on the side of the road, then you got a unit out of service. It's a ninety-five truck. It's approaching thirty years. Is there any plans to replace the old rescue six, which is now rescue two in Haddock?
Yes, he has plans to replace it. I don't know what his particular plan is for that.
That's almost become an emergency situation because it can't respond because of parts are obsolete in the dash and other parts of the truck are just, can't find it in junkyard, can't find it.
Right. The particular situation that you're referring to, the truck was parked on an angle. It was a quarter of a tank of fuel, and it, it got to the point where it wouldn't pick up fuel. With that.
Multiple occasions on multiple calls, if I may, it got hauled in several times.
The gauge could not be repaired, so they, they did an aftermarket repair on it. They also, the secondary fuel tank has holes in it, and it's been taken out of service, blocked, so they only have one tank that is usable on that vehicle. But yes, he has plans to, to replace that unit.
Whether we do a lease or something, but that, that truck becomes a life safety issue if somebody is in dire need of a rescue and it's, something else goes out on it.
And where that truck is, is pretty busy.
It gets run. I know it, rescue two responds all over the county at times.
And it's one of, one of our man's stations, too, so.
Right. Just want the board to be aware of that. Maybe, I'd like Thomas to look at possibly a lease for that station because it's a, it's a life safety item.
Any, any question? Any other? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Will he talk, build maintenance, or he got this under control?
How many's he got on here? Four things, five things.
Six budget season.
Wow. We're trying to catch him back up.
You're gonna be able to do it in two and a half minutes.
Maybe, yeah, maybe so. Okay, my first item is over at the Central Georgia Technical College over here behind the McDonald's. We have a building over there. We had a unit go out, it's been about probably a month and a half ago, A C unit. It was about probably twelve years old, and heat and air people told me that there's very little insulation in the attic. Therefore, the thermostat's running all the time. We didn't get the life expectancy out of the unit. What I'm supposing is the spray foam, the top seat, the rafters and all in it, it's new techno, well, it's not new technology, but it's lots more efficient than just the bad insulation. The cost of that, the bill's like thirty-five hundred square foot. The cost is seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
They gotta remove the, the ones I've done in the past, you gotta take the bat.
Yes, gotta take the batting, and all that's included in this, this.
So you're gonna take the old out, and you just spray the.
And then spray the top, that's correct.
I never understood why you had to take.
You know, I was the same way, and I was questioning him. He said, no, you gotta take it out, so, yeah. My item number five is kind of repetitive. Every yearly, we're wanting to do a painting of the fire station. Every year, paint's going up. I think I read yesterday that paints, so in twenty twenty, it's up like twenty-two percent for the cost of the paint itself, and that price is thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars. Let me, I've got some pictures I'm gonna share with y'all, too. This is Station Three. That's gonna be the next one I want. The pictures aren't doing it justice. I'll just pass them around. They, it's pink now, kinda like the courthouse. It used to be like a different color, but it's pink. It's, it's time for that one. That also covers, the price also covers the washing of the roof. So, and the price on that is, Fire Station Three is thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
How many square feet is it, you said?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred?
Yeah, I was gonna say, good pressure washing, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, what about the soffits? One picture it looked like, could tell if it was stained or if they were.
It's stained. It's, I don't see any rot, haven't seen any rot on it, so, yeah.
And this is just the exterior of the building?
It's just the exterior of the building.
And this is paying someone to paint it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can I ask a crazy question? Is this something that we could use inmate?
You know, and this is gonna come up again about the courthouse, but we have tried to get inmates painting from the sheriff's office, but they, uh. Either they don't got anybody, or they can't turn loose to nobody, or we just haven't had any luck, and that's over probably two years of trying to get inmates to paint.
Okay.
If y'all got any strings that we can pull, hey, I'm all for it, because we've actually had, they've done some good work in the courtroom upstairs that they actually did some paint for years ago, so.
Is Department of Corrections, is there? We don't do that no more? Or they don't do that no more?
They don't do that.
Okay.
And painting, I, I mean, I don't, the thirteen thousand, you've already gotten quotes for that?
Mm-hmm, that's it. Okay, the, my next item is item number six. Over at Fire Station Six on Upper River Road, there's an addition they put on the backside of it. And there's rock around the bottom of it, and it just, I mean, it looks bad. And what I propose trying to do is trying to put vinyl siding. There's not much upkeep with vinyl siding, and it's relatively inexpensive. Fifty-eight hundred dollars for the vinyl siding. It's roughly a hundred linear foot around it. Ceiling height's probably fourteen foot tall.
So the vinyl siding in, how, how many square feet is this one?
It's not the whole building. It's just the back addition area. It's probably, I don't know, the addition's probably, what? I don't know, two, fifteen hundred square foot probably in the back.
How many feet of plywood are you gonna have to replace, because you're not gonna put the vinyl over the rod?
I'm sorry?
How many feet of plywood, how many sheets do you anticipate? Does that include the plywood replacement for the rotted areas?
It's probably, which I didn't count the sheets of plywood, but probably, probably fifteen, twenty sheets, probably.
Okay.
And then you gotta paint it, and. Okay, the next item is item number seven. Out at Liberty Park, there's a fence that runs across the front. We wanna basically dim it, back there by the overlook. If you look through some of the pictures there, there's a lot of bad wood on the old, uh. On the old stuff, and this would take all the maintenance out of all that. It's a vinyl fence, four foot tall. They would take away the old and install the new for thirty-four hundred and thirty dollars. My item number eight is, they've requested at the courthouse some interior painting. This is the entranceway into the courthouse, the offices, all the court, the civil court, uh, so, hang on, I gotta hear. Superior Court, magistrate court, and the superior court deeds room. It will be all these, all the paint in front, including the front entrance and the ceiling, the dome area in there. What we, what we talked about is, you know, maybe doing this area this year, a little more next year, and then, you know, work our way to get the out. Outside looks good now. They wanna bring the inside kind of up to date, too. Cost for that's twenty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
How much of this was painted in the recent roofing window type? I know we had some leakage, and they had repair sheet rock in other areas in the courthouse, magistrate court, and a few other areas.
Right.
Where we did roofing repairs, and then.
Yeah, they just basically, when they, if they had any damage, they just painted the inside the windowsill. They didn't do anything really to the walls.
Right, okay.
And that's alls I got, guys. Any questions?
Any questions for Donald? We appreciate y'all very much, too.
Hey, appreciate y'all, too. Thank you.
We ready for lunch break?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, since we've got Jennifer here, do we wanna go ahead and hear her before we do the lunch break?
You want to?
I'll do it really fast.
Real fast.
Real fast. Actually, you know, y'all and I have something in common.
You hungry?
Y'all don't know what I'm gonna say, and neither do I. Just kidding.
Well, that's about as clear as this being today.
Real quick, honestly, I only got three things. My first thing is, item number one, that's actually, I need to make an adjustment to that. So it's, it says laptop for vehicle, but it's actually the stand that I'm requesting.
Like what's in the sheriff's department's vehicle?
So the other half of that is in a different department budget, but, so you can adjust that total to, you know, roughly around seven hundred and eighty dollars versus that figure that you see there.
Seven eighty, okay.
The, my second item is, it's letters for the building. Have, you know, have never gotten completed, and I can just show you a quick roundabout, and I'll ignore color, because it doesn't matter. But basically, just looking to put, because it never got completed, just some vinyl lettering on there.
Is it gonna be red?
No, it's not gonna be red.
Okay.
That's why I said ignore the color. I'm not sure why they sent it to me in that color. But, and my item number three, real quick, is I'd like to get my two officers' body cams. You know, transparency is everything, and, you know, accountability, and, you know.
So for this cost, does this include any software, or what are we gonna do with the footage?
No, I don't believe that we need anything as, you know, high-tech, is that the ones that I got a quote for through Galls, it, it comes with everything that we need as far as like, you can download it to a computer, but it doesn't have to go to a cloud or anything like that.
Yeah, we just need to look at how much it stores, because if you.
Extended call.
Yeah, and there's a lot of legal around that. We just had to do that when we got all our campus police deputies wearing body cams. So policy around when they're gonna be activated, not activated, because what's gonna happen is you go to somebody's house and you don't turn it on, and then there's a problem after the fact, and then they say, well, I want the video footage. Well, we didn't have it on, well, why not? So it protects us, absolutely, and it protects us from the other people saying, well, you should have had that on. So it's a policy of, you know, do you turn it on every time you meet with the public, every time you encounter an animal or somebody with it, is it automatic turn on? And is that stored for X number of days or X number of hours now? So we need to make sure that the camera has the capability of storing it. If not, if we say, well, it only stores eight hours of video, and then you gotta download it or it overrides it, and then somebody comes back and says, well, three days ago. Dang. Forgot to download that day, and it overwrote something, they're gonna say, well, you know, you're intentionally trying to. There's just so much craziness about those. I think they're amazing. I think everybody ought to have them in law enforcement. Needs to have them on for their protection when they, when they do anything. But if we say that, and then sometimes we don't do it, that's when they're gonna pin us for it. So I just wanna make sure we're getting, I just think that's a, I absolutely think you need to have them, but I think that's a, I think it's too, too, too low of a number.
Yeah, I'm just like, does this, what the sheriff has, I mean, I'm sure they're expensive, but wouldn't, he'd have support.
Yeah, I think I'll discuss that and.
You look at what the sheriff's using, and then we.
Battery life.
Same thing, that way the sheriff, you can down, I mean, he's got, I got everything you need. He go, come on down, and they let, they download, and you're good to go. But he might come up there, so you, you know how much you're getting ready to spend, too, so, I mean, it's.
You gotta look, look at your battery life, because if you, sometimes you get out of your truck, you may be out for an hour dealing with a situation. Well, if it goes dead. Well, if it goes dead thirty-five minutes into it and then something happens at forty-five minute interval. You know, it's a he says, she said, where pictures worth a thousand words on litigation.
I, I can use some info on it. Ninety percent of all the counties use the exact same, like Paxon, I think it is or Axion or something, uh cameras.
That's all I have.
We just want you to be protected and your people be protected.
Pizza ready? Oh, man, thank you.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you.
Y'all want some pizza, come on.